Not sure if she's going to turn the light on or not. I think the camera's on, but...
Good evening and welcome to the Town of Scarborough Planning Board Meeting for the evening of April 22nd, 2014. If you'd all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carol, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ogless?
Here.
Mr. Befard?
Here.
Mr. DuPont?
Yep.
Mr. Fellows? Mr. Mazur?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Paul?
Here.
With the absence of Mr. Fellows, Mr. McGee is a voting member this evening. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of March 10th, 2014. I move to approve. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And we have one extension. Our next item this evening, Trillium Place, formerly known as Woods Edge Subdivision. Woods Edge Scarborough LLC requests a preliminary subdivision review for 11 single-family lots off Ash Swamp Road. Mr. Chase?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As board members will recall, this application has been before you, at least once before, and actually was scheduled to be heard at your March 31st meeting and was tabled at the applicant's request so they could have more time to address some of staff's questions. As board members may recall, staff previously had some concerns regarding the spillway design of the stormwater pond at the terminus of the proposed roadway, particularly impacts it may have had on abutting neighbors, as well as street lighting and open space identification. The applicant has made some modifications to the plans and presented those in their proposal. This time, staff is relatively comfortable that those items have been addressed. We have received comments from Mr. Wendell, Towns Engineer, as well as Woodard and Curran, our peer review engineers, who raised a couple of concerns. Mr. Wendell identified the design of the access off the Hammerhead. And Woodard and Curran primarily had concerns with the results of the plume analysis, particularly there seemed to be a bit of overlap and just looked for a little bit of clarification from the applicant on that item. Other than those items, staff has no further comment this time.
Thank you, Jay. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil Solutions. We're here this evening representing the group of individuals who are with us who are going to be the developers for this particular project, the owners of the property. I'm also joined by Travis Lotelier, who is one of our engineers, who, if you have any technical questions, Travis should be able to answer them for you. Otherwise, I will do my best toward that end. And again, because the board is fairly familiar with this project, having seen it originally many years ago under a different developer and then took a respite for a while during the recession and is now back again, and then you saw it somewhat recently here as well. So you're probably very familiar with what we've got. Toward the end of my very brief presentation, I'll be happy to address any questions that you might have or any comments, and then we can go from there. In the interest of brevity, I'd like to be able to just give you a quick overview of what we're looking at. Essentially, we're looking at a property that is on the Saco line, which is Scarborough. This is Ash Swamp Road, and we're proposing to be able to come off of this. Originally, we were off of this section, this section right in here, but we closed that off with a fair amount of wetlands disturbance that we were looking at in this particular area. Given that the owners of the property, when they acquired this property, which was not part of Ash Swamp, which was not part of the original development and now is, we've been able to merge the title of those two lots, create the roadway you see it. All the lots, as far as the lots themselves, there are no impacts as far as the wetlands are concerned regarding the building envelopes and houses that would go in them. There is a fairly minor impact of wetlands as far as the roadway is concerned. But we've, as you can see, we've snaked the roadway around to the extent that it is absolutely minimal. We've got a D E P permit that is on its way. It's actually already been reviewed. We don't have it back yet. We will certainly have it before the final. We will not be here for the final until we actually have that in hand. Notwithstanding that fact, the other things that Jay mentioned are mostly labeling changes, but I will go through those in here in just a moment. As far as the overall layout is concerned, you can see on your plans that you have before you and then on the presentation sheet, we've got one house on the property that already exists. We're incorporating that with elements. All these other lots, as you see them. There is a small cemetery that's right down here. One of the questions from the comments was, you should be prepared to create some type of buffer immediately around that, not only the legal buffer, obviously, some type of physical buffer, which we will certainly do. There was an issue earlier where we kind of crowded the building envelope in with that, but we've since subsequently redesigned that. So the cemetery is far away from where the house would typically go. We are looking at private water and sewer in this particular area, so all the lots have wells and septic systems on them. Everything has passed according to Scarborough statutes. We'll entertain any questions if you've got those questions about the well and the water, or the water and the septic later on. There was a question about stormwater that Jay had brought up down in the area of Lot 1. Originally, there's a pond right here, a wet pond, that will be right in this area for detention, retention of stormwater. There was a question before because there was no specific device that was treating the overflow of that and when the water, if and when the water overflowed in a hundred-year storm event, it would typically go wherever it would go. We've heard the concerns of one of the abutters, and what we've done is we've literally culverted this water, this stormwater now, so that in the event of an overflow, which is highly unlikely in a hundred-year storm event, but they do happen, and toward that end, if it's a magnanimous event and we do have an overflow, it will actually be captured beneath the pavement. And in a culvert system that will come out here to a swale system is actually going to put it where the water typically would go anyway, which is in the wetland area. So that should be taken care of as far as any of those issues are concerned. There was also a question about lighting at the end. We've got an LED light pursuant to the Towns Regulations that basically makes light position, ambient light that tends to glow around you by focusing the light straight down at the end of the road. So we'll have a culvert-style light at Ash Swamp Road to be able to turn in as is required. And then for safety's sake, down at the end, but there will be nothing in between. The orientation of the plan, a couple of quick things that Jay had mentioned. We still have to take one for him before we come back to it. The driveway orientation. There's no turnout issues. The area that is right in this section, one of the comments was that we would like to be able to, on the plan, as well as physically on the site, delineate that area as the buffer from the wetlands so that even during the construction phase, while no houses, obviously, or any other structures would go there, sometimes contractors tend to get in there with some fairly big equipment and they kind of do wherever they have to go to be able to create, build the driveways to houses, to the schools, et cetera. For this, and Scarborough many years ago came up with the idea of pinning or fencing or somehow marking with hard physical characteristics the actual end of a lot or the buffer between that, the upland buffer between that and the actual wetland area. So we have shown that on this plan. Jim is the Towns Engineer, but he might actually want to hatch this area so that on the plans, there's no confusion by anybody from contractors to homeowners as to where their property ends, despite the fact that all the properties will be pinned and where the wetlands actually begin. So coming off of that buffer by 25 feet, we're looking at, any of the buffer that extends into any partial properties will be delineated with caps. We have with our name and license number on them and they're delineating wetlands buffer. It's fairly obvious to anybody. Anybody who wants to actually put up a fence or a stone wall or what have you, that's even better. We've got the individuals, but those buffers will be marked on the land. And then on the plan, we will show them graphically as well with a different hatching so that it's separated out and there's no confusion by anybody saying, "I wasn't aware of that." It'll be pretty obvious on the plan itself. There were also some questions about the limits of clearing associated with Trillium Way along the Saco line. We have approximately 10 feet, 10 to 11 feet, between the edge of the right-of-way, Trillium Way, right in this section, and the actual boundary line of the property, which in this case, coincidentally enough and very fortuitously, is also marked by a fairly substantial stone wall. So it's fairly easy for anybody to know, contractors in the field, in other words, to know where they can't go. So as far as the buffer is concerned, we're trying not to, it's mostly, much of that is a field out in that area, but we're trying not to disturb any of the existing growth that's right just on our side of that stone wall. Although from a clearing limitation, given the grading that we'll be doing out there, there may be a little bit of that. Hope that addresses those questions, and those are referred to on the plans now. I'm not going to go into specific details as far as the engineering is concerned. Suffice it to say that it's not pretty much an issue. Jim's, the Town Engineers' comments are mostly labeling issues. He did have a question about an overflow detail riser, which is just a graphic detail. There's nothing that we have to change on the plans for that, and we've taken care of that. And when we do come back for the final, actually before that time, we will have submitted that information to staff, and they will take a look at that as they have in the past. On the reviewing engineers' comments from Woodard and Curran, as Jay had mentioned, the only thing of substance, other than labeling, that they had suggested that we take a look at or explain to the board, basically, is the nitrate plumes. These are the subgrade plumes that are the result of a higher concentration of nitrates from the effluent of a septic system. Where do they go? Typically, unless you're building on sand, in which case they pretty much kind of go straight down, they tend to follow the topography of the surface a little bit, depending on the soil's conditions. This is called a hydrogeological survey, and what you'll see in your packets. I also have a little bit more of a handout for you in case you don't have it. This has got the plumes on there in a little bit more detail, a little bit more obvious than you might have seen. Essentially, what that means is you will see these plumes that are subgrade, which is where the nitrates are essentially a natural fertilizer, basically. And that's absolutely fine when it's in the soils. What you typically want to do is keep it out of the lakes, streams, rivers, et cetera, because they tend to promote algal blooms. So they're fairly important to know. And it's very good that Scarborough and many other communities do require these when you're looking at subdivisions with septics. In this case, what that means is those individual plumes that you see on there, which are the gray shaded areas, that is the concentration, the anticipated concentration of nitrates as a result of the septic system that would dissipate to less than is required by minimum at the outer parameters of what those plumes look like. There are two plumes, one in particular down at the end, lots 1 and 2, where the plumes tend to meet, albeit slightly. That's not an issue. Typically, what that means is that there may be a very small, higher concentration of nitrates in that particular area where the two plumes from two different septic systems on two different properties may end up meeting briefly. That higher concentration is not an issue, however, because I spoke actually yesterday, well, I know this anyway, but I spoke with John Sevian Mahar, who we had do this, and he explained as well that the plumes, or the extent of the plumes that you actually see on these plans are the extent of them, that they anticipate, given the information that we have given them from a soils perspective and the concentration of the minor concentration of the nitrates on 1 and 2, actually those plumes take that into consideration. So there's no issue as far as any of the nitrate plumes extending beyond our property. Beyond that, I don't want to monopolize the time, so if you've got any questions or particular comments, what we would like to get from the board this evening is preliminary approval, and I'd be happy to address anything that you've got.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Susan?
Couple of quick questions with, someone's had these questions, but you haven't sent this over to me.
That's all right.
Lot 11, it says that the existing disposal field requires abandonment, and the same thing with Lot 10. Where are the, where is the well for Lot 11 and where will be the well for Lot 10?
The well for Lot 10, which is this one down here, the well for Lot 10, the existing, is actually right in the middle of the road. We have to abandon, and because of the wetland impacts that we have here in the turning radius of the road.
Okay. So there'll be a new well there. I misread it. Okay. And then Lot 11 requires a new disposal field.
That's right, because the disposal field that, keep in mind, this whole section of property down here was one. But that was one at the time. And the disposal field for the existing house is actually now on a separate lot. So it doesn't necessarily have to be abandoned, but we need to get a new one.
And the well, the new well will go in what I see is the blue section of Lot 11?
Uh...
Right, on Lot...
I'm looking at...
I'm looking at...
No, those are the areas within which, yes, as far as the wells are concerned, the areas that are outside of 100 feet, that's a 100-foot separation of the...
So when I look at Lot 8, which is the one that extends up further, you know, other side, way up there, yeah. It's clear to me where the, where the disposal field will go. The blue, the blue at the end where the driveway comes out does not necessarily mean that's where the well is going to go.
That's correct.
Okay.
These plans just show where they could go.
Where they could go.
Any of the test bits that we might show preliminarily on any given plan show that a property can pass, it doesn't necessarily state that it can't.
So essentially, we don't have the wells laid out yet?
Um, they are on the plans, but they are there only in hypothetical. We show where they can go, not necessarily where they will go.
So when we do each lot, we'll find the well?
Yes, exactly.
If I might just jump in real quick. The intent of these plans is really to show that it is feasible to locate these items, but as each lot sells and individual property owners go to develop their lots, they may locate septic systems in different locations, and then they'll deal with sort of their well placement accordingly through the code office review process and the building permit process.
Should, should be noted.
Those are my only questions. I think that the questions that we had at our last meeting have been addressed.
Great.
Thank you, Susan. Mr. McGee?
Last time, we mentioned the cemetery, and it was kind of a loose affiliation of the word cemetery. I guess there were two gravestones that were found there. Have you explored the area further? Is it still just the two stones? Is there more to it than that?
Nope, there's not more to it. We did take a look at it. Whenever we see a cemetery, and as you're probably aware, it's very challenging to move a cemetery, not that anybody would want to. So we want to make sure that we take a very close look at whatever those parameters are so that we can encapsulate that, figuratively speaking, so we don't go near there. And we did take a look at that, and as many of the family cemeteries that were out, that are out and about everywhere, we only found what we've shown on the plan.
And the easement that you have provided, the 10-foot easement to get to the cemetery?
Yes.
It's just going to be a footpath, I imagine, and would it be maintained by the owner of property number nine?
It's not really even a footpath per se. It's more of a path that is allowed within the, a grass path, essentially, that's allowed to go there. The interest is, anybody, anyone from the public on a publicly accepted road, which eventually this would be, has the right to go there. It's not likely that too many people would, but they can. Point being is that we don't want to make something that's too inviting to bring a whole lot of people into a cemetery when there's nothing there. So toward that end, yes, there is an easement, but we didn't intend to actually make any specified path to it.
Okay. That's, that's the extent of my questions at this point. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Mr. Befard?
Uh, I don't have any questions at this time.
All right, thank you. John? Ron?
Yeah, I have some. I just want to make sure I got the total picture clear in my mind, going back to the last time this came before us. The net residential calculation, did that turn out to be okay?
Yep, that reviewed that. There were a couple of...
Okay, so you're okay with that. And then, just to repeat what you said and then followed up by what Jay said, everything is okay as far as the nitrate analysis is concerned, so even if the new owners or prospective owners were to change the location, it would still pass?
Yes. The topography of the entire area, as you can see, it actually goes kind of this direction over in this section, so anything that's down in this area wouldn't matter at all. The only plume that would conceivably matter at all would be, well, let me back up here a little bit. If you have nitrate plumes on an overall property, unless you require, unless you obtain an easement from somebody that's not on your property to have something go onto their property, everything from stormwater to nitrates to the roads, to the houses, et cetera, has to be on that overall subdivision. So toward that end, we have to make sure that anything is going to stay on that overall property. The one on Lot 1 is short enough that even if we had a, somebody that wanted to go in there and build a five to six-bedroom house, which is how septic systems are typically designed, it would, which is how these were designed, it would be, it would work on that particular lot. Long answer to your question, but there shouldn't be no issue there.
Thank you. And then I just want to address Jim Wendell's comments. Have they all been addressed as far as the easements are concerned to include the Town of Scarborough?
Uh, yeah, you mean the easement to the Town of Scarborough to allow access to the...
Yes. And it says the fire tank easement?
Yep.
And, now, the other, only other thing I have is, I'm not clear either, is the Town of Saco. Where does all that stand?
The only thing that we need from the Town of Saco, which we do already have, is a letter from the Department of Public Works that says that, very unequivocally, they have absolutely no issue with our clearing in the right-of-way, which is actually in this section right down here, as Ash Swamp comes into Saco. I just wanted to make sure that from a site distance, that we have the appropriate for more... Toward that end, there are a couple of trees that are, this is on a slow curve right over here, and there are a couple of trees that are actually in the right-of-way, and we can't just go cut them with impunity. So we did get to Department of Public Works, and they said, "Absolutely. You want to take out the trees in our right-of-way, go for it." And you should, the town has the letter, I think, they have it. Okay.
Okay, and, street acceptance, that was some discussion last time, too. How, where does that stand?
Well, we can't ask the town to be able to accept a street until it meets all the criteria as far as final coding is concerned. And when that comes, then we will, I mean, the street doesn't, or the town does not want to accept a street that needs any work on it.
But you put them on notice of what the intent is, I guess, is where I'm going with that. That's not that it's been done, signed, sealed, and delivered, but they're aware of everything that's about to take place.
Typically, and it all actually works a little bit the other way around. We, or at least the way we approach things, is we approach projects such that any street, unless we specify otherwise, will eventually be a public street. In some cases, developers or our clients don't want that. In some cases, towns say, "You're not," whether it's Scarborough or anybody else, "Okay, you say it's going to be a public street, but we've got a series of criteria that we have to go through to accept it, and if you haven't met that criteria, we're not going to." So the town is aware that we are asking for public acceptance of the road, but it won't be until everything is done.
And then the obvious, you said that the D E P permit is underway.
I'm surprised we didn't have it already, but it's, we will definitely, we will not be back before you until we have that in hand, and you do as well.
I'm done.
All right, thanks, Ron. I really only have one question. You've addressed all the other ones, Mr. Fisher. This evening, you brought up something new to me, though, and I just want to talk about it for a second. You mentioned that you're going to be putting in a culvert in the retention pond near Lots 1, across the street from Lots 1?
Beneath the road.
Beneath the road, yes.
Yes.
So my question relates to, is there, is it the intent that there will be a homeowners association or something established in the neighborhood?
Yes.
And where I'm heading with that is ultimately the maintenance plan for the retention pond, and to just make sure that the right verbiage is in to the contracts, if you will, when the lots are sold, that the maintenance has to occur on the retention pond.
Yeah, and it's not just the retention plant, thank you for bringing that up. There are a few items that are typical, that are under the auspices of an association. It's their responsibility. Even when the road is publicly accepted, there are still certain things pursuant to suggestions or comments or requirements by the board that the town doesn't want to have to deal with, so the association will have to. The overflow devices, for instance, the pond itself, making sure that over the course of years the pond doesn't silt up to the point where it's no longer effective. Those are the types of things that will go into the agreement, and those agreements typically are literally attached to the deeds so that when somebody buys the property, either initially, or three or four homeowners down the road, they get that same issue. If for whatever reason, somebody doesn't get that because it was dropped from somebody's previous deed 20 years from now, there's still not an excuse to be able to say, "Well, I didn't know." That's the ignorance of the law is no excuse type of thing, because it will have been approved by the board. The town, the staff will take a look at that and will typically go through that agreement and make sure that from the town's perspective, everything is covered that way.
Right. No, it's just something that we never see. I just wanted to, we as a board do not see it.
That's, staff will see it.
Right, staff will see it. I just wanted to make sure that we were looking at that and getting that in place as we're moving forward.
Very good.
Yep, Susan?
Just a question of mostly of curiosity. On the April 4th letter, it's talking about, hold on a minute, I got to find it. The shed is going to be removed from Lot 10, and we've got to replace the... Is there going to be someplace where this is all noted? I mean, it's going to be part of the subdivision, that lot, which was, which now has a house on it and a shed on it.
Yes.
It's going to be part of the subdivision.
Correct.
So I would assume that it's contractors or the developers' responsibility to make sure that that is done in a timely fashion as well? In other words, the houses aren't going to all be built out and the shed not still moved, and it'll all just be built into the...
It will be built into the equation, and from what I understand of the developers, that that's the first lot, and that house is ready to be sold, essentially.
Okay.
So it's probably going to be the first one out.
And I believe those notes are, you can find them on the plan set. You do have to look very carefully.
I'm not going to do that. That's why I have you around.
But... They are there.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, they are. Small, but they're there.
All right. I think everybody seemed to be okay, and as I said, this has been fairly well-vetted. So I would like to make a motion that we grant preliminary approval to Trillium Place, formerly known as Woods Edge Subdivision, Woods Edge Scarborough LLC, man, I'm having a tough time tonight. Request preliminary subdivision review for an 11-single-family lots off Ash Swamp Road. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? I show that to be unanimous.
Thank you for your time.
See you when you get your permit?
Yes, indeed.
Our next item this evening, Anthony Vale Way Subdivision. Norman Barubi Builders requests a subdivision review for three single-family lots off Sarah Liberty Lane. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members may recall this application was before you at your last meeting. At that time, staff and the board had just quite a discussion with the applicant regarding concerns of potential impacts of the development on the existing stormwater issues in the neighborhood, particularly given the existing groundwater table in the area. There's also some discussion about the road design and waivers that would be required should that, should the board be comfortable with the proposal. At this time, you will have also received, in addition to staff's comments, a review comments from Woodard and Curran, our Town Engineer. We asked them to take a very careful look at the issues of potential impacts to the neighbors. And at this time, based on applicants and Woodard and Curran's review, or staff and Woodard and Curran's review, we feel as though there's the need for additional evidence to be able to assure the town that there won't be any adverse impact on the abutters. We recognize that there are existing problems in the area. It's not this developer's responsibility to fix the existing problems, but we really feel it's incumbent on the town to ensure that we're doing our full due diligence to ensure that there aren't greater enhancements to the existing issues. Some other comments that we flagged, there does seem to be a bit of, a little bit of discrepancy between whether the intent is to really maintain this as a private road, in which case the Public Works Director has stated he'd be comfortable if the board were so inclined with the waiver request to have the Hammerhead on the left side of the road rather than what's expected on the right-hand side, which is typically expected. And if the board's so inclined, we'd like the notes on the plan to very clearly state that the rationale for the waivers that it's the intent of this road to remain private and not to become a public road. that it's the intent of this road to remain private and not to become a public road. And there seems to be a little bit of discrepancy there. Staff also have previously raised, there's, on the plans, and actually on the plan before, the shaded areas are identified as sort of a no disturb buffer area for stormwater retainment. They are actually initially to be disturbed, but once they're disturbed, they'd be revegetated and undisturbed. And we just feel that, given, you know, the lot sizes, yet there be a revegetation plan and some type of clear demarcation on the face of the earth of this area is not to be disturbed in the future. Because one could fairly easily see mowing occurring in this area if it weren't clearly marked. And then finally, there was an issue that was raised in a previous round of public comment that related to the potential deed restrictions on this property from a previous plan, or covenant, I should say, retaining, regarding, it actually occurs in the documentation that was presented in the property transfer between Lisa Hall to the Grandins. And we are unclear at this time what those covenants are, because we weren't able to find the plans that are referenced. And so we just think that further analysis of that should be provided before moving forward. As stated, in addition to staff's comments, you will have received comments from Woodard and Kern. Should also note, I believe you should have in front of you emails received from Josh Stulman, I believe, on April seventeenth, if I'm not mistaken. He had previously addressed the board and continues to have some concerns that he wants to bring to the board's attention. With that, I turn it back to you, Ms. Chair.
Thanks a lot. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Bill Thompson with BH Two M Engineers here for Norman Barubi Builders. We were last year, excuse me, in February, and we heard testimony from the neighbors on the issues that they're dealing with surrounding this property. And we took those very seriously, and our charge, as Jay said, is to not impact or downgrade in or offsite properties. We were charged, I guess, with the planning board's final comments, two things that I had noted. One is the nitrate study to show that the three lots, as a conservation subdivision, smaller lots, can support a subsurface disposal system and a drilled well, individual wells. And our plan shows, the study done by T V Mahar, who was the last applicant, went at great length explaining the study and the nitrate plumes. But our plan and the results show that these lots will easily support, and the locations are shown as just a suggested location for septic, and none of the nitrates leave the property, thus there's no impact to downgrade in properties. The other issue was, looking at the plans at the last submission, they asked us to get some more detail on the topographic survey, the grading, just to see, you know, where the stormwater is in a pre-condition, pre-development, and then where is it on the post-development. In order to reduce the post-development rate of runoff for any project, with the increased impervious roadways, houses, drivers, et cetera, we need to redirect, which we've done, the drainage areas, to show that the stormwater leaving the points at the analysis points is less than the pre-development. So what we did is, on Sheet Two, we went out and generated a lot more topographic information on the abutting properties out into the wetlands. And I've looked at the approval plan that was done here for, I believe it was Woodfield Estates. Basically, this area is flat. I mean, our elevations are one thirty-nine to one forty-one. Out here in the back of these lots, or the back of our property, same elevations, one forty-two, one forty-three. So this whole area, including, you know, what was developed out into the homes there, I mean, the land is very consistent, very similar. So there's the, again, the grades out here, there's not a lot of movement in any direction. So what we've done with that information is we have two plans, again, part of yours, Jay, I believe, five and six. Here is a representative layout of what the pre-development stormwater, surface water is doing. Here's the Capola lot here, and the abutters off to the west along our common boundary line. These heavy black lines show drainage areas, what surface water is going. And this route here shows what the flow path would be on any given storm event. This area here is another area of stormwater which discharges at this point. This area here being the largest, as you can see, is heading to the northwest and the impact on the abutters as we show on this plan here. There is a small area of pre-development that comes across Capola's property, and again, on this corner here. So you take those numbers, the drainage numbers, and we get a flow rate, so many cubic feet per second in our report. They're very small. In order to decrease where the perceived area of concern on all these abutters, we need to direct, redirect that surface water, and that is accomplished with our road design and lot design. So then that final sheet is the post-development plan, with our proposed roadway and the three lots graded out. Basically changes that, that drainage area that you saw in total here is reduced down to this strip. So our rate of runoff in this direction is equal or reduced. Same with the area heading over to the Capola property, these areas reduced. And you can see the largest area now, including the roadway, all of that surface water by design, with our road pitched off to the south, is going to discharge out at the end of the road. The lots we have all graded, so they come back toward the street. There's a small area behind the lots here and here, which that surface water will continue to go off the lots, but it's greatly reduced in our analysis. The one area, again, by design, we still have surface water leaving here after development, is to pull that stormwater back in this direction. The area of discharge here does increase. It increases by about one and a half CFS. And again, comes across into this wetland, and from the point of the end of the road to the property line, it's about seven hundred feet. There is an increase, again, one point six nine CFS from a one point one four to start with. But that's by design. You pull it away, we've reduced the impact and the surface water going to any of the properties. The thing we've got to remember is, with these three lots being developed, the roadway, houses, driveway, we've got about point six acres of impervious, about twenty-seven thousand square feet in total, over a twenty-two point seven acre lot. That's about two point seven percent of the site. A very small area, we're pulling the majority of it back here. We've reduced the impact coming off to the northwest, reduced the area coming over to Capola's. But that's what we're charged with any project, is to reduce the rate of runoff from pre to post. So the post is, again, less of a, less of a number. Jim Wendell, Peter Tubbs had reviewed this and didn't have any issues. Now, Woodard and Kern, I got a memo generated by them, I got that last week. They have some questions very similar to what I just explained, is what is the impact on the abutting properties? Again, we believe that our report takes the pre and post, brings those numbers down, and with the grading plan shown on Sheet Two and Three, again, we believe we've accomplished what we were charged with. So with that, Jay, again, highlighted on a couple of things on the road, the T-turnaround. Those, any discrepancies in the road being designed to meet the town's standards, we can do that. I felt tonight was important to see where we're going with the stormwater issues and resolve that with the board, and then we can come back and have the other details addressed. That's where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I turn this over to the board, we would like to offer an opportunity for the public to comment on this. Ultimately, if you would like to make a comment on what you have heard from our applicant this evening, please feel free to approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. We ask that you try to keep your comments to five minutes or less. And if you are a subsequent speaker, we ask that you try to only bring us new information if possible. So if anybody would like to make a public comment on this, we welcome that now. All right. I guess before all's said, I will in fact turn it over to the board. Nick, would you like to start?
Let me say, I appreciate the extra efforts you've put into making sure that the water is not running off any more than it is into the abutting properties. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass on questions here for a couple of minutes. I might come back to it, but at least, at least I appreciate the extra efforts that I'm seeing here versus maybe our overall concerns from the first time you came to us.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
I also appreciate your efforts to clarify this and show improvements, make more assurances that this will work. However, at this point, I'm not really on board with this project. When Sarah Liberty Lane was developed, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, but the Grandins built their house there at the end of the road, and their house lot was forty acres. And my understanding that the reason for that is because it was wetland. Most of it was wetland. And now we've got a proposal for three more house lots. And those houses, whether they have basements or not, are going to be built up, I'm assuming, which means the water on those lots is going to drain off. The road is going to shed water as well. And you may direct all that water to the south, but I think it's anybody's guess as to where it's going to go from there. You can get, you know, experts to do a lot of calculations and estimates, but there's really no guarantee in my mind, and I'm sure the developer isn't willing to guarantee that either. So I need to hear more, see more, and understand more before I can get on board with this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. John?
Thanks for the clarification on the elevations. So if we're looking at Sheet Six, the open space area, I assume that's remaining untouched. So then you go back to Sheet Five, it's showing that that flow right now is generally going towards the property owners to the north, I guess it would be. So you've obviously minimized that a lot. Question I've got, elevations on Lot One and Two are pretty close to the same as the road. So you're going to have to bring in materials for the leach field.
No, the leach bed is designed based on existing ground surface, not any fill material. So we do the design based on existing grade, and we have fifteen to eighteen inches of non-hydric soils, which will support. Then there's the buildup of the septic system, but we don't, we don't put in three or four feet of fill and build a septic system. There is a certain amount just to get above the groundwater table.
All right. I would certainly look forward, you know, probably wrote in favor of this, if those elevations in Lot One and Two were increased, because they're pretty close to the same as the road. They're one forty-two, one forty-three, and the lots look like they're one forty-three. I forget those increased, the flow towards the road, that water runoff from the roof and from the property would run towards the road.
I asked for a clarification, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
The lots One and Two, we have a level, flat area, if you will, of one forty-three. The existing grade there is about one forty, so there's three feet of fill, and it grades back to the road. There's a drainage ditch to pick up that water. So the only water coming off the lot that we're not picking up is about, you know, a twenty-foot swath, which again is greatly reduced from the existing ground. So three feet of fill, well-drained soil, is going to pull that water back to a ditch, which picks up at the side of the road. So these lots are being filled, you know, in average, about three feet. I'm not sure, did you want to see them higher?
So is the elevation of that ditch one forty, is that what I'm seeing?
Elevation of the ditch is, stops at one forty-two up here. When it gets down to the front of Lot Two, it's at one forty.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
I just want to follow up with my two colleagues, because I'm a little bit confused. And getting back to this private road versus public road, Dave, what's the discrepancy on that? Because I know that with one of these existing structures, the town did a lot of work in trying to minimize the flow of water. And even though they put culverts in and did some other improvements on the public road, there's still water accumulating. And I'm trying to figure out how the public versus the private, the road then, projecting it's going to be private, right?
That's what the applicant has suggested in their narrative. I think, let's see, so there's two issues going on here. One has to do with sort of just the basic design of the road, as in the direction that the hammerhead turns.
Right.
Right now, the hammerhead kicks off to the left. That's the town's, for town's operation and maintenance purposes, we'd like to have it kick off to the right. So where the applicant's requesting a waiver from our design standards, the Public Works Director has indicated that he is, would be satisfied with the board. If the board's generally comfortable with granting a waiver, he would be comfortable granting a waiver for just the direction that the hammerhead turns, provided that the road be remained as private. The applicant's narrative suggests that, but their notes on the subdivision plan suggest they might try to have it be public. And I recognize that that can pretty easily be cleaned up moving forward, and I think I've heard the applicant already this evening, sort of talked about their intent to address those issues, to have it remained private. So that's separate and distinct from the stormwater question. And at this point, based on the narrative, or based on the reports that have been generated in Woodard and Kern's most recent report, analysis, really trying to get a better handle on the hydrology of the area. I think the initial assessment by Jim Wendell and Peter Tubbs really took a look at sort of, really sort of just the, how best to describe it, the quantified calculations as far as the amount of impervious area and the flow, and where it's generally being directed towards. I don't think that, at that time, we had a good handle based on sort of the characteristics of the site, based on the abutters comments, and based on other indications we've gotten now from Public Works as to the drainage, the existing drainage problems, just based on, not so much, it's really a, the groundwater table, it has such seasonal variability. Essentially, the area, the soils in the area are generally sandy, which you think is typically good for, you know, for groundwater. However, there seems to be a hard pan of clay at some depth, which prevents, you know, during, again, high seasonal variation, when there's a lot of rain events, snow melt, what have you, the groundwater table simply pops out of the earth as it stands now. And so the issue that I think is addressed in Woodard and Kern's memo is that there's a further analysis that Woodard and Kern is suggesting is needed so that our records can clearly indicate, I think to Mr. Befard's point, that there isn't going to be an adverse impact on the abutters. At this time, we can't, doesn't seem that we can be assured of that statement. And so that's, that's the break.
You just did very well in what I was asking.
Okay, good.
Because following up on what Dave said and what John said, that's the conclusion I'm coming. I'm not convinced that there isn't going to be an impact the way the water's going to flow right now. And I don't, and following up on John, I'm not convinced that just building these on, with no basement really solves the problem. So I'm sort of agreeing with my two colleagues in their concerns as far as the flow of the water. The reason why I asked about the road is because a lot of work already has been done, and there still is a lot of water flowing. And I guess the follow-up question that I would have is if it goes to the left of the road...
is if it goes to the left or the right, if that doesn't have, won't have any impact as far as the overall problem is concerned? That's a question, not a statement?
I think that's, I mean, you're gonna have the same amount of impervious area, it's really a matter of where the water flows, but I think generally, given that very small sort of head of the hammer, if you will, that's probably not gonna have a great deal of impact, like with the asteroids, but I think, you know, it certainly, it appears to staff anyway that this discussion merits further discussion probably between the applicant's engineer and the town's peer review engineer to really come to a common agreement as to what type of analysis should be done so to provide this board with the evidence necessary to ensure that we're not gonna have adverse impacts on the abutters. Again, recognizing that there are existing conditions, and that's not, this applicant's charge is to solve the existing problems, but this applicant's charge to ensure and provide evidence that they won't have any more adverse impact. That, and we don't, the staff's analysis, we don't believe we're there yet.
Yeah, okay, and-
Not to say we couldn't get there, we don't-
Okay, and even for the new homes, I, I'm not convinced that the problem is solved based on what we've heard.
All right, thank you. Susan?
I'm generally in agreement, but I think it's mainly because I'm very confused. I'd just like to make sure I understand some very basic things. What is labeled open, what I'm looking for is how this is not going to impact the existing homes anymore, in fact, might even help if that's possible, okay? So we take a look, what I would really like to, yeah, okay, we take a look at the road, and as far as I can see, the plan for the road is that the impervious surface is going to be, by design, draining into the wetland.
Correct.
Okay, so there's nothing about the road itself that is going to create more of a difficulty for the present owners off Holmes Road?
That's correct.
Okay. Now we get to the open space lot?
This here?
No, the one that is off Liberty Lane, is that part of this subdivision?
It is.
I mean, it is part of this property.
It is.
But nothing's gonna be done to that property?
No, it will not.
So there's not gonna be anything done on that piece of property that is going to affect the water tables on any of the other houses?
That's correct, left in its natural state.
Okay, so we've got three lots, lots one and two, you tell me in your post, um, page six, that the way you are going to direct the water on these new lots will be to the, towards the road-
Correct.
Except for a slight buffer-
Correct.
Which will mean that there is, if I can make this make sense. If that were to happen, lots one and two would therefore take land that is now flowing into the existing houses and have it flow in the opposite direction.
Correct, some of this area is flowing in this direction?
Just one and two, no, just don't, no, don't, don't talk about hydrology, excuse me.
Okay, lots one and two, your question again?
You're gonna, you're going to mound it, or you're going to direct the water-
Correct, we're changing the direction of the water.
Towards the road.
Correct.
That water now, if there's water there now-
Correct.
It sits there.
Some moves, but it mostly sits, yep.
If it flows, it flows up, it flows, it seems like it's up, because the paper is up-
Right.
But it isn't flowing up, it's flowing into existing lots.
Correct.
Okay, so by changing the topography so that the water on proposed lots one and two now flow towards the culvert in the opposite direction, except for a small buffer, and I can't remember how many feet that buffer is-
It might be twenty-
I'm sorry?
Twenty, twenty-five feet wide, huh?
Okay, so except for twenty-five feet, all the rest of the property that now potentially is going to flow into the homes that abut those properties are no longer going to flow into those properties. So essentially, the way it's shown, there's going to be less impact than it now exists.
That's correct.
So not only are we not creating more problems, I'm not right?
I, I think, just, just to jump in, but I think what Woodren Kern's memo is suggesting is we don't know that for a fact yet.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not there.
Okay.
I'm not there.
Okay.
I'm just trying to understand what is being said by the applicant.
Fair enough, I, okay, that I just-
All right. Now, lot three, at this point, I don't remember, what's happening to lot three, the way you're gonna direct it?
Lot, lot three, again, will be, will be coming, this, this heavy line indicates-
Yeah.
The limits of stormwater going this way, this is coming back to the road also.
But it won't be going towards the houses on Holmes Road?
That's correct, this piece here will be going as it does now, to, toward the Capola lot.
But the rest of it's going to go towards the road and be picked up by the culvert?
In a ditch, in a ditch to the discharge here.
Okay, thank you. Now I get back to what I think you were going to say. I'm very proud of myself. In theory, this works for me, because I don't see that what you're doing is creating any greater impact on what now exists, in fact, it possibly may affect it, create less of an effect. If however, our engineers say that there's not really any engineering proof, and that's why we have town staff, and we do all the kind of multiple examinations that we do, is that I'm gonna go along, because I trust the system, to find out whether or not the actual conditions that are out there will do what the applicant is saying. I have no problems sitting here tonight with the concept, in fact, I think it makes a lot of sense. But I don't know anything about the hydraulics of it.
Okay.
So I'm gonna turn the hydraulics of it back over to the rest of the staff to make sure that when we see you again, we get it. And this allows me to say something that has nothing to do with this, well, not really, it does have something to do with this applicant, but this is just a general, a general thing I notice. I drive around all the time, looking at proposed and recently done and to-be-done developments in Scarborough, and we're getting to the point now, folks, where there's very little land left that isn't wet. And why would anybody buy a house that was up on a knoll, with water all around it in the town of Scarborough? People don't ask questions. Somehow or another, I would like to have there be something that says to people, you know, pay attention to the topography of the land where you're gonna be buying your property. You know, it, it, it's wet, and if you know it's wet before you buy it, then, you know, buyer beware. And I don't see how you could possibly not know that this land is going to be wet. So I'm just saying that there's a, there's a, there's a balance here between the person who is going to want to purchase the property and the person who's developing the property. You can't make wetland anything but wetland, but I do think that we don't wanna make the situation any worse than it al, anymore, we don't wanna create any greater impact than we already have, and we don't wanna create any new impact either. And we're gonna have to, and we're getting, we're getting very, we're getting much more partic, not much, we're getting, becoming more and more particular about how that comes down, because there's so little land left that isn't wet. Thank you for letting me have that podium.
All right.
Can I respond to that?
All right, thank you.
I'd like to respond to that. First of all, most buyers have inspectors, and, and, and when, before they buy a property.
You'd think.
Okay, well, I'm telling you, the best of my knowledge, so if it, if, between the buyer and the inspector, if they don't ask those questions, then, then that's the problem.
Well, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying it's all wet.
And second of all, the implication, and I, and I'm on the other end of the spectrum here, is yes, I agree that there's, there's a lot of development going on. As far as I'm concerned, the more, the better, okay? And because, again, I, I stand behind the tax situation in the town, and, and therefore, if we get good projects, I don't mean just projects for the sake of projects, but good projects, then so be it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, um-
Mr. Chairman, would it be all right if I jumped back in?
Yes, it would.
I'd like to think out loud, if that's all right with everyone. Um, this is more of a question for Jay, I believe. The, has, has there been any precedence or any, anything that you guys can remember in the past where some sort of bond has been placed aside for improvements if this didn't work? Let's just say that we have a proposal here to change drainage, and we find out that the contractor has not done what we expected them to do, has there been a performance bond set aside as to lessen the impact to the abutters? Has that, something like that ever been done, is it even allowed to be done?
I think you're asking two sorts of questions, so I'm gonna answer it in two ways. One, to the contractor who builds what is approved by this board, yes, there is a performance guarantee that they need to post before they start building a road, and the town holds that until the road is built perspect, and then the performance guarantee is released. But that's building what was engineered. The question as to what's engineered, you know, if, if what's engineered and evidence is provided to this board, the board approves it, and then it's built, performance guarantee is released, and then three years later, we find out there's stormwater problems? No, I mean, there's really not a lot of recourse in that instance. You know, potentially, a private property owner could try to go back through the chain of the applicant and developer and try to, maybe try to find suits there, but once, that's why it's really incumbent upon this board to be sure is that there's sufficient evidence for each of the criteria that are in the ordinance. Each one of the eighteen or so subdivision review criteria are there to require that they submit sufficient evidence, and if this board is, doesn't feel that that's presented, then the board needs to act accordingly. If there's sufficient evidence, or regardless of any sort of out, you know, outside influence, provided there's sufficient evidence provided to those criteria, then the board needs to act accordingly as well. So as far as the town going back, should a subdivision be approved because there was adequate evidence provided, but the engineering was off? It's sort of a, yeah, there's, there's no precedent for a-
So make sure we get it right, is?
Make sure we get it right, yes, sir.
Thank you, that's it.
All right, thanks, Nick. So to try to answer your question to the board, in terms of trying to get a feel for where board members stand, I will weigh in.
Okay.
And say theoretically, I agree with you that if you can do the things, logic says to me, water flows downhill, therefore, if I'm, if I got a three-foot grade, I'm gonna move water away from the existing abutters, with the exception of the Lehman family, as we're not really doing anything to that open space coming in along the opening of the road. So they have the property that is the closest to Sarah Liberty Lane, right? So there's really, we're not really impacting them in any way, shape, or fashion. What was, for the most part, what's happening today is gonna happen, uh, although I might, there might be some impact by what was coming from, actually, there was. You showed one flow coming in off your analysis, analysis point number four. So almost everybody on that border looks like they would be positively impacted, all right? So I will say theoretically, I, I understand, and if that is in fact what we're dealing with, then I can support that, all right? At the end of the day, I'm gonna let the engineers duke it out and tell us what's what, because I don't think any of us here on this board has the ability to do the engineering analysis themselves and make, make the point. So we'll rely on the engineering community to help us there. We've talked about the hammerhead issue, et cetera, that I do not think anything was addressed on the land transfer covenant, was it? We haven't heard anything on that, do you have any-
I do not, no.
Information on that, Bill?
Our, our understanding is the Grundan piece, the forty-acre piece, was not part of the subdivision. But I think my client's understanding is that it would not be bound to the same covenants, but, and I haven't seen the covenants. I mean, they plan on building some big homes, they're not gonna build a small house. But I don't think you're gonna see any difference in quality out there, if that's the concern of the neighbors. The subdivision is approved under the conservation subdivision, which is zoning, we're, we're bound to that. But again, we have submitted initially a conventional subdivision plan that shows that it would support three eighty thousand square foot lots. Conservation district zoning requires you to, to make them smaller, and we have, you know, eighteen, almost twenty acres of open space. So, um, that's, that's, that's our understanding from what the, what any conditions from the previous development of Sarah Liberty Lane would apply to this parcel that the Barubis have under contract.
I mean, again, where do we need to go on this issue, Jay, do we?
Yeah.
Is this something we need to be involved with, is this a, a legal matter?
I, I believe it's a legal matter, um, in reviewing the deeds, and I can, um, there's reference to a plan, let me see, how do I say this, there's, there's covenants that state that this property should be governed by the general notes on a, a plan, a noted plan in, in the deed. However, that plan doesn't appear to have been recorded, as best as staff can tell. So at this point, as we put in our comments, we would ask the applicant, we'd seek the applicant to provide a legal analysis if what they're proposing is, um, is appropriate, given the, the existing deeds and covenants on the property. As board members will recall, there was, initially, there was some question, 'cause there's a complex history with this lot with regards to it providing some density to the subdivision along Holmes Road, and so there was some legal questions there, but that seems to have been answered. And at this, so there's, this additional question was raised by one of the abutters, and when staff looked into it, we do believe it is a question that should be addressed prior to, um-
Approval, okay. All right, so ultimately, we need to have the applicant work on that and come back to us with, with some kind of a definitive answer on that item. Water certainly, as we've said in the past, is a big item, so if we can get the engineering firms together and come up with what everybody believes to be the best answer to the question, is probably, again, where we need to take this. If there is any other consideration to private versus public road, obviously, Bill, you need to address those items.
Correct.
The vegetation plan that was mentioned earlier, I think those are the, those are the issues that we're still concerned about. Is there anything else you need from us this evening, Bill?
No, I just appreciate your, your time, and I hope we've accomplished quite a bit with, with the work you asked us to do, and, and again, somebody said, well, what is the problem out there? Well, I think we've solved the problem in demonstrating how our grading plan works. The first half of that road, two hundred and seventy feet, is curbed, so no water will leave the road, it'll continue down the curb line-
Yep.
-so it gets to a ditch, so, I mean, we've done everything that hydraulics will allow, and as you said, water flows downhill, and we've got it all going down to the, to the south. And when it gets into that wetland, I did review around the backside on the woodfield subdivision, all of those lots were built up, and their water comes back to their road in a ditch system. So none of that land is, is impacting our open space. And the grades at the edge of their property are equal to what we have, so.
There's always two parts to this equation, and one is getting the engineering correct, and then the second, and probably as important, if not more important, part is to actually getting the work correct. So I mean, that's gonna be one of the key factors. If, if the hydrology and everything is what it, we believe it to be, and if the grading and everything does what we hope it'll do, then it should hopefully be an improvement to the abutters. But that's all, obviously, totally dependent upon, do we do it the way the engineering said it needed to be done? And I, this just happens to be one of those projects where the margin of error is probably reduced in terms of potential impact.
Would it incur me in the fourth engineer on this, I, I think will come up with the right answer.
I feel, I feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Uh, before we move on to our next item this evening, I do need to make one announcement, I am remiss in doing so, but item number nine this evening, Phil Hall requests a review for a subdivision amendment to lot eleven C of the Josh Hill subdivision- for a subdivision amendment to Lot 11C of the Josh Hill subdivision, has been tabled at the request of the applicant, so apologize if somebody was waiting for that item this evening. Our next item, item number six, Eastern Village subdivision, Valentine Development LLC requests a review of their proposed sixth amended subdivision plan. Mr. Chase.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, let's see, I think some board members will recall, um, application, uh, the Eastern Village was originally approved back in two thousand and eight, under the provisions of the traditional neighborhood development option overlay district. The intent of the TND zoning is to enable flexible and creative creativity in design, and as such, the subdivision was approved with a mix of housing types and uses, and was granted special space and bulk standards throughout the area through a rigorous review process with the board. As the title will indicate, there have been five previous amendments, the applicant is now before the board for a sixth amendment, which really has sort of three discrete components to it. One is to add six new lots along Valentine Way, and these lots were actually before the board had won the previous amendments and was withdrawn at that time, and the applicant's now proposing those. So at this point, that's really only questions in that regard, is how does these lots fit in with the density? I think the applicant's done a pretty good job with their tables of trying to demonstrate to the board sort of the complex subdivision with a lot of nuance, and staff was appreciative of the work that went into trying to walk staff and board members through that. The second sort of major component is to modify the construction phasing. This was originally a nine-phase subdivision, the applicant's now looking to make it eight phases. Pretty subtle differences there, however, staff does have two primary questions. One has to do with affordable housing component, and I believe the applicant's prepared to talk with the board about that, but at this point, board members may recall, the applicat- or the original subdivision was approved with thirteen affordable housing units, which are part of a density bonus, and to date, and I know the applicant's been before the board with these type of discussions for a variety of reasons, the affordable housing components have not been able to gain traction, and they're proposing to amend that at this time, however, ostensibly, at the end of the project, there's still proposed to be thirteen affordable housing units, but we do feel that is worthy of discussion. Staff also displayed a couple of questions we have with the eastern trail improvements, and we do recognize that these were part of the original approval, but really, just in looking at it, we were curious as to why there's a stretch of the off-road eastern trail that's proposed to be part of Phase Five, where it seems like a lot of work is happening with Phase Three. And that's really just a question, and the other item for consideration is the terminus of the trail sort of seems to come right into the parking lot, and we wonder if it, if consideration might be given to wrapping it around the, I'll call it the sort of southern edge of the parking lots to tie in maybe a little easier with the trail. And then the third component, maybe, maybe the most complex component, is the additional, addition of housing types throughout the subdivision. The applicant's looking to add limited single-family units, cottages, and duplexes. Board members may recall, it wasn't too long ago that the zoning was changed to allow the TND to take advantage of the flexible residential density factors that exist in our zoning, and have been incorporated into many of our more modern zones that came along sort of after the TND was established, and that part of the zoning was adopted, and so now the applicant's before you to take advantage of those, and to talk about the new housing types. In that regard, really, staff just had questions with regards to how those new housing types and the additional density, what impacts it may have on stormwater and any DEP permitting. Particularly, interest is parking, particularly for the cottage lots, which are, you know, some of the lots are eight hundred square feet, and so just want to be sure that adequate provisions are being noted for parking. And then I guess the other item that staff noticed is that the, with the adjustment in the new housing types, there seems to be some adjustments to the road designs and some open spaces in future phases of the plan, and to date, we haven't received a full detailed sheet for the overall subdivision build-out, sort of highlighting those areas and working through those particulars, and so we thought that that should be considered a component of this application moving forward. With that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair. I will note that the applicant did provide response to staff comments on Friday. Staff had a chance to take a cursory look at some of the responses this afternoon, and I know the applicant's prepared to share those with the board at this time, but given the board's policy not to receive comments at that late a date, we had not forwarded that along to you to date.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Joe Levario, from Face Poppy and Thorne Dyke is our company name. Last time I was before you, we were DeLuca Hoffman, but we are no longer DeLuca, so same company, same folks, same place. Been involved with Eastern Village since the beginning, so certainly, as I think Jay gave you a pretty good summary of what we're seeking tonight, and it is pretty involved, a complicated process or project in terms of, from beginning to end, what we've done in terms of development-type residential type of units. As Jay said, I won't, I'll be more interested in trying to answer some of your questions as best as opposed to recap on what Jay asked, or outline for us, but basically, in summary, the three items he did talk about, I think did kind of capture it, that the six lots that we are adding along Valentine Way was in front of the board, you may recall, the last time we were here, as part of the Phase Two changes. We retracted that, had to do more with sewer, that's an area of Valentine Way that does, currently does not have sewer in it. We were proposing to do the sewer via a private system, which the Sander District was unwilling to allow to occur at that time, which is one of the reasons why we retracted it. Those lots, though, that same application was submitted to the DEP at that time, and we got approval for everything that was proposed at that time, so those lots actually have received DEP approval, but they did not get local approval, they ended up being retracted out of the local approval application. So those, we're looking to add back, and we are gonna be putting sewer now essentially in Valentine Way, unfortunately, we'd be disturbing a section of road that we just built not too long ago to not to get sewer in to support those lots. The change in phasing is pretty subtle, if you looked at the comparison in the application materials that's submitted in terms of what's changing for Phase Three. Phase Three has always previously included the work along Old Eastern Road, the pond, and the entrance in from Old Eastern Road. It's really the connection between that side of the project, say, and the current Phase Two, Two A, Two B combination. It's changing which road it connects onto in a few of the lots. But I think in total, I think some of the important things associated with Phase Three were the eastern road improvements onto Valentine Way, or onto Black Point Road, the large stormwater pond, and really creating that connection through the development, so we now have vehicular access on two sides of the project, and then with that utilities water system looped through as well, so that was one of the other things I think we've always been committing to doing by Phase Three, so I think those will happen. The residential types, which is kind of probably the most complicated thing, is hopefully was explained well enough. I know there was a comment on Jay's about the duplex units that I tried, I responded to, which I know now you folks did not get the response to, but there was a little bit of misunderstanding about the duplex units, because we're looking to add, the original project had single-family house lots, townhouse lots, and essentially, multifamily or apartment units were kind of the three types of residential uses we had, and we're looking to introduce what we're calling limited single-family, which is a smaller unit, it's only twelve hundred square feet of living space, so it's kind of tied to those residential density factors, so that would count as a point six-six residential unit as opposed to a whole unit. The carriage house lot is this very small lot, and again, that one's tied to a living space of no more than seven hundred and fifty square feet, I believe, which again, counts as a point five residential units as opposed to one for a total single-family unit. We also were proposing to do a duplex unit, which, again, most people understand duplex is a building, two units in it, which is what we're looking at doing here, but it's really split between two lots, so there is one half of the duplex unit on one lot, and one half of the duplex unit on the other lot. I think that was a misunderstanding at one point, I think in Jay's, at least when he commented, because he was thinking we were looking at a duplex unit on each lot, and that's not really how we're looking at doing it. So the tabulation that we had given in the application was, in my mind, is correct, in terms of how many units we would have, and that total residential unit count, if you look at the Table One, Two, and Three, those numbers I think are correct. Jay did, we did get some comments, I'd be happy, since you didn't get them, I'd be happy to run through those if you'd like. If not, I won't, but one of those was the duplex units on stormwater, which was another question that he asked. Again, if we hadn't gotten DEP approval for the six lots along Valentine Way previously, we would, that's something we would have to address, because it's an expansion of the previous footprint of Eastern Village, but that has been approved by DEP, so I'll put a check in the box on that one, that one's okay. The other changes on the lots that we're doing that are taking into account the limited residential, the limited single-family, the carriage house, those changes in lots for those different types, they're not changing the overall development footprint of Eastern Village, it's really just a reshaping of the lots in the way the project was originally approved by DP. There's a percent impervious coverage that's essentially to the entire residential area outside of roads, sidewalks, whatever, so just the lots themselves. So we're not changing the developable area, and we're not changing the total impervious area that's associated with them as part of the approval, so the stormwater numbers that DP has approved are in fact still valid for the project. With respect to parking, Kerry Anderson from Valentine Development can kind of go through a little bit more with you on the, what the carriage house is, what it would look like, but essentially, the carriage house is living space essentially over garage space in theory, and they're very nice, but I'm just saying, in terms of that, so it's, the two parking spaces that are being provided are essentially the bottom floor of the unit itself, and the living is above, and on the limited residential, or the limited single-family, I'm sorry, keep going, residential, limited single-family is the same thing, there will be a garage unit and one off-street parking space that's provided on each one of the lots. Each lot will have two off-street parking spaces provided on the lots themselves, I think that was one of the questions that Jay had. With respect to the eastern trail, again, I'm not so sure that we're opposed to how it connects onto Old Eastern Road, I mean, where it's shown now, to be honest with you, it does come out into that parking space, I mean, I'll also say that was two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight, I know we had a number of meetings about that trail and how it was gonna go along the side of the road, and, you know, where it actually connects, or I'm sure we could adjust that somewhat, it probably doesn't have to come out at that same, at that location that it's shown. All I would say is, at that time, everybody was happy with where it was, but again, it's nothing that's been built yet, so I mean, where the end of that is, it's probably not the end of the world in that it can be moved or adjusted accordingly. I think it's always been in Phase Five, I mean, we would like to keep it there, but I understand the staff's questions, we are doing a lot of work in that area, so I do understand that. I think we could certainly make a connection or a reconnection back to Old Eastern Road, and it's, we're terminating it now, but I mean, I guess we can certainly open up a discussion on that. Again, our request would be to keep it the way it is, it's in Phase Five, and that's kind of where we would like to keep it for now. So I will try to answer any of your questions as best I can, I know the tables, there's a lot of information on those tables, I wasn't gonna try to go down through it unless you'd like me to, but we tried to give a comparison of what the previous approval was and what we're seeking as part of this amendment.
Was that?
Yep.
All right. This also is another item that we have on our agenda this evening, which has, or which is open to public comment. If there's anybody here who would like to make public comment on this item tonight, we welcome you to do so. Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, please. Not seeing any, I will turn it over to the board.
Dave?
Thank you.
I have no problem with the changes you proposed. My other question is for staff, are there plans to put a light at the end of Eastern Road?
At the intersection of Black Point, I presume? No, there are no plans for that, no.
There's no need at this time, or is that, or is it a possibility down the road?
Through their traffic movement permit that was received with the original approval, there wasn't found a need for a light, there was found a need for pedestrian improvements, given the eastern trail work, and that work has been modified from what was originally approved by the applicant, by the town, because the town was prepared to move forward, and so in coordination with the applicant, the town has made those improvements, or made actually slightly adjusted improvements from what the applicant had originally approved, and so those, like I said, that was in coordination with the applicant, and those have been accomplished to the extent that they're planned to be. I'm all set.
All right, thanks, Dave. John?
I'll wait.
Ron?
Yep. It's getting late, so numbers, you can run numbers by me, and they all sort of just blend together, so I'm gonna ask Jay, are we all set with the density, the duplex and everything now?
Uh, yes, as I mentioned, the applicant did provide a response to staff comments, and I did get a chance to take a cursory look at that, it does appear that they've assuaged my concerns with regards to overall density on the site, and I do have a better understanding of the duplex, and maybe with some additional minor notation if it could be clear. Yeah.
Okay. I heard what you said about the EP and stormwater, I can deal with that. I heard what you said about the garaging, but according to what I understand, the fire department has expressed concerns about the way things are right now, and I just wanna make sure things aren't gonna get worse with the new construction, that they say that their mobility through this site as it now exists is a problem.
I mean, what I, all I can say right now is that the road, I mean, again, the project is, it's twenty-foot wide roads, it is narrow streets out through there, we are required to provide two parking spaces off-site for each one of the units. As you know, most of this project is, or a good portion of it is, garages are on the backs and the alleyway areas. The very beginning of the project, the first phase of the project, the driveways were not, it's not that way, so there were driveways off of the road itself. So I'm sure during the construction of those, there's been a number of folks that contracted whatever, that had been parked on the street, and perhaps that's what the fire department's issues have been. That's the first, I guess, I've heard of, the concern when it was raised, but I mean, like I said, as it's, as it's by the TND, it was, it is by design a narrow street system, it's twenty-foot wide roads, and that's what the standard was, so I mean, that's what's being developed as part of the project.
I'm gonna combine my next two comments into one, and that's the eastern trail and the affordable housing.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, I think the board has bent backwards to accommodate the applicant in putting things off and giving the amendments to the original situation, and I think now I'd like to see a little bending in the other way, in seeing that when work is being done down at that end, that perhaps the eastern trail could be diverted a little bit, as noted by staff comments, and at least one unit of affordable housing be gut, I mean, because we keep pushing it off and pushing it off and pushing it off, and I'm-
it off and pushing it off and pushing it off, um, and I'm beginning to get a little concerned that, um, it's never gonna happen. And I understand, because I sat through the complexity of the affordable housing, uh, the way it's written and, 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 in scavo and, and how it's being marketed, I appreciate that, but I'd still like to see some effort done in, in a unit of affordable housing, uh, begin. I'm done.
All right. Thank you. Susan?
I agree with Ron in that, um, it'll get done, affordable housing, but we haven't heard anything about it in a long time, and there are a lot of changes being requested here, including different kinds of, um, building types, so I don't expect it to be tonight, but, and maybe it was in the thing we didn't get, but I would like to have some idea of what the long-range goal is for how to fit this in. We know that that didn't work there, and this didn't work here, but we're talking about new ways to bring in buildings, and we're talking about, um, you know, new densities and so on, so at some point during this phase, during this, um, amendments, I'd like to have something offered to us as a over, how it's gonna fit into the overall plan. Um, just a question, when it says on the first page of your April second letter that the applicant is seeking to amend it to include the following, one is the creation of six new lots, and number three is the new types, question was, are we talking about any of those particular new types being shown in the six new lots, or is it just three separate things completely?
Uh, well, it's three separate things, I guess, completely, and when I reread my letter, I would read these things from free commit, and I guess I would say is, at the time when I wrote this, the creation of six new lots are along Ballantyne Way, that is true, but there are actually more lots being created, when you read through the rest of it, when we started to go into the new types, because we actually sat down with Dan
Mm-hmm.
A few weeks ago to actually go through this, and when we were talking about, what we, what we essentially did was took, in some instances, say, two or three existing lots that were in part of the plan, and modified them to incorporate, say, a carriage house into them, or to break them up into the limited single families.
So it was discussed where that might actually happen?
Yes, yeah, and-
But it's not in this particular phase?
Nope, uh, there is some of it in this particular phase.
Oh.
There are two, there are two duplex, um, there are two duplex buildings that would go in, um, if you... Again, on the subdivision plat, I kind of highlighted the lots that we've actually done some editing to in some dimensional format or some type. Again, as you come in on Ballantyne Way, these are the, these are two lots, two of the six.
Mm-hmm.
Um, those would be duplex units, so again, the, on, there's a kind of a topology that's on there, that's, that's got the lot type designation, so the DP is a duplex unit, so there's a duplex unit on this lot and a duplex unit, but it's one duplex building, but split between those two lots.
So one and three are connected?
They are, they-
So they only be, never mind, I interrupted.
Yes, they are, that's what I'm saying, when I read through that again, I caught, well, I could see how somebody would not understand what I was trying to say. We, we built six lots essentially along Ballantyne Way, but the duplex units, there's, there's two duplex buildings going in on those, on that entry as well. When you get into the rest of the development, this was a cluster right up in here, which is lots around 103 to 105.
Mm-hmm.
Where we reconfigured those original three lots, and included, you'll see where there's like, say, a 104 and a 104A and a 105 and a 105A, that's where they, they were broken up into one single family lot, say, for instance, that may have been divided into two limited single families, so there's, those uses, there are some of the new uses proposed in Phase Three.
It's tangentially-
Mm, they are connected.
Okay. I'm sure I'm, I may be the only one who doesn't quite understand this, but you have two attached on the duplex.
Yes.
Two attached housing units located on two separate lots, and under separate ownership, so it's called a unit?
Well, it's kind of like the townhouses, I guess I would say, if you think about what we did on the townhouses, the townhouses, again, were one building.
Per.
One building that, that had at least three units in it. They could have up to six, but they had to have at least three, so it's basically a mini version of the townhouse in a way.
They were on each, I really was, I haven't been around for a while.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so they were on, each one of those townhouses has its own lot?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay, okay, so that makes sense when you start talking about the single, okay. Um, I would like to, again, because I've been, I only live down the street, but I've been away from this.
Mm.
According to the amended phasing plan that you, that you suggest, you know, that you're presenting tonight.
Mm-hmm.
For, um, mm-hmm, dated April 2014, it's got, it's got activity for Phase Three on the Eastern Trail.
Uh, yeah, coming in-
Point of Phase Three is what we call open space, but that must be the retention pond.
Correct.
That's why it's in part of Page, Phase Three, because we need the retention pond?
Correct.
But we're not gonna finish this all off and make it nice open space right now, we're just gonna build the retention pond.
Well, I mean, it'll be finished off in terms of, that it'll be grass growing and everything that we need to do for the pond, it's, it's the leg of the Eastern Trail that, um, so as, as the portion of the Eastern Trail that comes in from Black Point Road-
Right.
-that runs along Old Eastern Road-
Right.
-to our entrance.
Now, I understand that all the information, all the stuff on, on Black Point Road has been completed, but from Black Point Road down to where it says, you know-
Well, down to where it enters into the project.
Right.
That will be built as part of Phase Three, it's really from there, the rest of the way across the bottom, essentially, that, that's, that's the southerly end of the site is-
We're gonna get the idea of Phase Five.
Um, well, there's notation of it on the phasing plan-
Oh, okay.
-that it's to be done in Phase Five, and I think, again, in Jay's, um, memo that was discussed as being, that that's where it's proposed in Phase Five.
All right. I, um, have no problems at all with the new, um, types of residential housing, being part of the Long Range Planning Committee, this is exactly what we envisioned, and I think it's perfect for, uh, this location, I really like it a lot. Uh, the construction phasing plan, I trust that that is just something that staff and you people can work out as, whatever. And the six new lots, I don't have any problem with that either. My only issue really has, was wanting to understand more clearly about the work on, um, Eastern Road, and to ask that we take into account, like, at this point, if at all possible, an overall view of what to do about affordable housing.
Yep, and again, I know Kerry can certainly speak a little bit more to you folks about what he has done, or what their past efforts have been, and we've done that before, but I know that that was one of the things that Jay did ask for us, for us to be prepared to-
I'm more concerned about the future than we can ask.
Nope, I know, but I'm just in terms of what the thought is, and what the efforts have been, and what they're looking to do moving forward, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Nick?
Nothing at this time.
John?
All right, I have no problem with the, uh, six additional lots, I don't have any problem with the expanded types of residential units, I'll express the same concerns that Ron had, uh, his board and the town council has done a lot, um, to push this through and all kinds of amendments. I don't wanna see the affordable housing thing kicked down the road anymore. I think we need to make an effort to at least do one of the units in this phase and not push it off. And, uh, as far as Eastern Trail, uh, I also think that extra thousand foot of, that's supposedly pushed off in Phase Five should be done right now, along with the Phase Three, seven hundred feet, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Um, I guess I'd like to start with just a general comment, and because of my line of work, I look at plans a lot, um, one of the things that would be helpful when you're trying to make us understand some of the changes that you're bringing forward to us is to try to help pick out the areas that you're physically gonna be, make the changes on or in on the plans themselves, I mean, like, you've got them very nicely highlighted in red now, that's a beautiful thing, you can clearly ID what you're looking for, but when you're going down through this package and looking at a plan like this, it is extremely difficult to figure out which lot we're supposed to be dealing with, and if there was some way that you could either, you know, hatch or do something, um, to help us see the changes, that would be appreciated. Um, I'm in agreement with my board member, my board, fellow board members on the Eastern Trail Road, um, the affordable housing issue, the thing that's concerning me is I don't wanna get to the end of the project and find out that, um, we couldn't do the affordable housing, therefore, we're going to eliminate the extra, uh, the bonus that we got because we had affordable housing, and we just turn around and eliminate four properties or five properties at the end, and not really get the affordable housing in, so that, I've seen that happen in the past, developers will come to us and indicate that they couldn't make that happen, and I understand that, that's a, that is, in fact, a problem, um, but my concern is that we continue to approve these bonuses, and we're not seeing, seeming to get any affordable housing come into the town, and if that's, if that's a process of the fact that we can't bring people into the town, I get that, let's not try to fool ourselves into thinking we're going to. Um, so I also would like to see, uh, us try to move on that before we get too much deeper into the program, at least get one, um-
Can I just, I'm sorry, I don't-
Sure, go, no, go right ahead.
I just wanna be sure that we're, we're clear on, on, my understanding is, at this point, the Askin is proposing three affordable housing units in Phase Three, the, the change is, previously Phase One had zero, Phase Two was supposed to have one, Phase Two A was supposed to have two, and then Phase Three was supposed to have two more, so at the end of Phase Three, there was supposed to be a total of five. To date, and we've heard from the Askin before, he's tried to make the affordable housing function in the earlier phases, um, to no avail, um, and so to date, Phase Two and Two A, Two B are essentially done, there haven't been any affordable housing units, um, created for all intents and purposes, and what the Askin is now seeking is to do three units in, at the, by the end of Phase Three, so instead of five, he's now proposing three, so I just wanna be sure that, if, that we're clear, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong in that, but that's, um, that's my understanding, so there will be, at least again, given what is proposed, the intent-
Question on that, is, is the cock before the horse, or which way does it go? He, he's intending to do three, uh, instead of five, but is there a possibility that Phase Three can be done without any being done? To date, that's first.
Good.
And again, I, I, I wanna make it clear, I am not faulting the applicant here, because I have seen certainly more than this applicant have a problem trying to fill this type of housing need here in town, so I am truly not faulting them, I just, um, I, I don't wanna continue to go deeper and deeper and deeper into the phasing and, and still not be able to reach some of the goals that we're trying to reach, so it's more of a comment. Um, another concern that I have, and again, you know, maybe it's the size of the drawing, and I'm a proponent of eleven by seventeen, so I'm not trying to recant that, um, but I, I, as we're making more and more of the changes, like some of the changes that we're proposing during this phasing, I'm becoming more concerned that, um, we, we need to make sure that the plans that are coming into town and getting recorded have some form of surveying, uh, process put to them, because I, I don't know what's happening on all of these boundaries, and, um, I'm just, again, I'm, there's, there's no way I'm gonna sit here and try to compare this phasing to the phasing that we, you know, this is the sixth revision, so I don't know what's happening, but we may need to start to, um, consider the fact that, that we may need some boundary lines put on these drawings. Um, and my final comment is, in regard to the new single-family housing, in the past in these areas, we've had very clear, clearly identified and shown access into the single, into the, the homes that we were doing, I, I think that line has become fuzzier now, in terms of how are we physically gonna, we're gonna access them from the back, we're gonna access them from the front, I, I don't know how we're gonna do that, we had nice, clear and understanding off the alleyways on how we were gonna access these properties, now it's not clear anymore. So I would like to try to help staff in terms of, um, being, or being able to help them identify how we're gonna access the properties, so that's clarification more than anything else, but, um, something that I hope that we can try to do here, so that we continue to try to clean up as much as we can, or take, take the fuzziness out of this as we continue to move forward, so that's, that's my concerns.
John?
Kerry Anderson, um, uh, so member of Ballantyne Development, uh, I believe the meets and bounds are on plans, uh, they have been signed by a surveyor, Joe can answer more of that, I think it's maybe the size of the plans that makes it difficult to see, given the number of lots, but on the plans, they do have meets and bounds, and surveyors have, uh, stamped the plans, there's a Mylar here tonight, uh, that has a surveyor stamp attesting to that, Joe can speak more to that, uh, just to address that particular issue. Um, as far as the trail goes, um, it was pushed into Phase Five, we've got a lot of off-site improvements, we've got a lot of onsite improvements in Phase Three, um, before we can start to put any infrastructure in for, obviously, houses, and that's the reason why some of that work was pushed off purely by economics. This phase of infrastructure here is two million dollars, uh, it's, it's just crazy what it costs these days to put infrastructure in, especially with development like this, where you got granite curbing, sidewalks, street trees, and everything else. Affordable housing, I think it's important to, uh, go back, uh, I know you wanted to, uh, Susan, you're interested in, in talking about moving forward rather than looking back, but I, I think I need to talk about, uh, history here for just a moment to give the board a sense of, uh, kind of the struggles that we've had, and how affordable housing actually got proposed. Uh, when I met with, uh, Ron Owens early on, before we brought this project fully to the town, I actually was the one that, uh, proposed affordable housing, I was the one that brought it up, I was the one that said I was willing to do it, and I was the one that said that I thought that it was a social, uh, responsibility, uh, given its location and whatnot for the project. The project also, um, we, it's, it behooves us to get the affordable housing done, um, the density bonus that was given to the project goes away fully if we don't do the affordable housing, so we lose not four or five units, we lose the bonus completely, um, so, uh, if we don't do it, we go back to what we would have had for normal density on an R4, which the property had originally when we came to the town. In order to take it from four units to the acre, which is what it was zoned for thirty or forty years, to the five units to the acre was through the density bonus and affordable housing, so if we don't do it, we go back to four, we, we haven't gotten something that we shouldn't have gotten for nothing, so it behooves us to do that. In 2010 and two, two, 2010 to 2011- In two thousand ten and two, two, two thousand ten to two thousand eleven, difficult time, we, uh, we constructed a house, got it framed, didn't finish it off inside, marketed it as an affordable units for nine months, and we didn't get anybody that stepped up to the plate. We then came back to the planning board, and I don't know if you remember this or not, Alan, I know you were chairman at the time. We came back to the town and asked to have that requirement waived in Phase One due to the inability to get a buyer. But we had a, we had a house up, framed, not completed, but a significant investment trying to get it sold to an affordable buyer based on the housing guidelines that the town has. In two thousand twelve, we held a meeting right here in the chambers. Uh, town manager was here, town planner was here, myself was here, my wife was here. Um, and, uh, a notice was sent out to all town employees, uh, that we were going to be, have, uh, marketing workforce housing, hoping to get, um, an affordable buyer for Eastern Village. The only person that showed up was a fire chief, and he was showing up just, uh, out of curiosity as to what we were doing. Two thousand fourteen, we've run ads in the local papers, uh, talking about workforce housing, and that we have it available, and that we are trying to do it. Um, when we have buyers that come through, or buyers that call, uh, we mention to them, if it's a neighborhood that doesn't, or if it's a price level that doesn't seem like it can meet their, their, uh, their, um, their budget, we mention to them that we have a workforce housing program. Um, we had, uh, two calls in, uh, ads that we ran in two of the local papers, uh, about a month, month and a half ago. And, uh, out of two of those calls, only one was, uh, one that, uh, could possibly afford it, and she's going to wait and see how Phase Three progresses. I can't tell you, I, oh, I've also met with the town planner in Cape Elizabeth, Maureen, to understand their affordable housing program and how they got it done in Cross Hill. I've talked with Cumberland, uh, about their affordable housing program and what they're trying to do. I can't tell you what the, uh, what the problem is, or what the answer is. Um, I do have my own opinion that there are people who just purely cannot afford to get to that level where the guidelines permit with the workforce housing to work, or they make too much money. We have spoken to a couple people that we thought would work, and by the time we went through the financials, they made too much money. I think there are people who are literally caught between not making enough and making too much. That's purely speculation, that's my own opinion. But, um, but it hasn't, it, it's not something that we have not put effort into, it's not something that we haven't spent money on to try and see, uh, happen. And, uh, we are going to, and I've mentioned this to, uh, to Dan, uh, town planner, and to Tom Hall, I believe, uh, I mentioned it to him as well. We are, as part of Phase Three, going to build a house, and we're going to complete it. And we're going to market it, uh, complete it, hundred percent, and just market the heck out of it until we find somebody who meets the guidelines. That's the only thing that we haven't done yet, but that's a significant investment. Um, it'll have to be made with cash. There's not a bank in the land that will step up and support anything like that. Um, so I hope you can appreciate the undertaking that, uh, goes with trying to make something like that happen. There's not a line of people that are standing in place, willing to sign up for these, uh, because if there were, we'd already have some built. We've made it, uh, known on the record at these meetings, we've made it known, uh, in the local paper. Um, some of the real estate brokers that deal with affordable housing are aware of it. One of them, who's on the Housing Alliance, uh, knows about it. Um, so it's, um, it's, it's, it's not as easy as it may sound, and I just, uh, want you to, uh, to understand, uh, kind of where, how it all became, um, uh, uh, suggested by me to, uh, the past, uh, town manager, Ron Owens, um, and, um, and, and what we've done, and where we are, and what we're going to try and do. Thank you.
Carrie, uh, what's, what's the price or price range of the affordable?
Well, it, it's, it depends. It depends on what, it's all based on the, uh, the, um, and Brian's here. Brian can probably share with you more information on this than I can. My wife is working on the program. Um, I've obviously got my hands, uh, full with other things, but it depends on how much you make, it depends on the number of members you have in the family. Um, it's, um, there's a couple different ways you can do it. Um, we actually prefer the way that Cape Elizabeth does it. I've discussed it with Tom Hall. Uh, Tom thinks that it might be more work for us to do it that way, but we think that if the town truly wants affordable housing, uh, that there ought to be every effort made to keep it affordable housing. And the way that the program is set up, and, and this incidentally, I think, may play a role in it as well. Um, somebody who, you know, that you want to make sure that somebody who meets the guideline doesn't come in, take possession of the home, and then be able to sell it for what, you know, fair market value is in a year or two, uh, or a month, or two months, or whatever. Um, the way that the program is set up right now in Scarborough is that the town would take a soft second, so that the homeowner, if they meet the guideline, they buy the house, and they decide to sell it two years from now, let's say there's a fifty thousand dollar profit, the town would get their soft second for whatever that number is, and then the homeowner would get, you know, the balance if there is one. Uh, the way that, but, but, but with that, what, what you have is essentially, you have an affordable housing unit that's built, it's in place, but then you lose it. The town gets the money, they can go and reappropriate it, I suppose, but you lose that affordable unit. The town, the town of Cape Elizabeth, I favor their plan, and their plan is that, um, there is no soft second, it puts more of a burden on the developer, uh, but, um, that number that is determined to be the, uh, the sales price in two thousand fourteen presumably will go up in two thousand fifteen, presumably will go up in two thousand sixteen, and on and on and on. Well, that buyer, let's say five years from now, will have to sell the house for what will be deemed that number in two thousand twenty, but they'll, but it, but it will remain an affordable home, a workforce home, because an affordable buyer will then step in and buy it under those guidelines. We prefer that method. We think that it's, it's hard enough, as we all can see here, to get affordable housing built to begin with, and if it's built, let's try and keep it in place rather than seeing it go away and then the town reappropriating the money in some way that they do it. Um, so there's some disagreement that we have with that. Whichever way it goes, at the end of the day, I don't really care. I, I want to get them built. Um, but, uh, but there's, there's, there's some idiosyncrasies that make it a little bit more difficult, too. And that's been something that with one particular buyer, um, we had to spend a lot of time with to get them to overcome. We actually, well, that's a long story, but they couldn't get over, there, there was one party that we were working with, and they couldn't get over the fact that the town was, was getting a second mortgage on their hu, on their home. Now, they may have had a hidden agenda, we don't know, but the, it didn't come together. Um, but, you know, there's, there's some nuances to it, and it's not kind of a one-size-fits-all. Um, so, but, uh, but I give you my, my word that we are going to get a unit built in Phase Three, we're going to complete it, and we're going to market the heck out of it, and we'll find somebody who will move into it. Um, hopefully, we don't have to sit on it for too long.
Mr. Chair, through the chair?
Yes.
And I would just say thanks to, for you, Carrie, for you bringing us up to date. And I also, um, appreciate knowing, um, the very differences between what might or might not happen in terms of making this easier. I'm also wondering, and I'm not asking this to you to answer it, but I'm also wondering if, within light of our next case, our, our next, um, item, the Habitat for Humanity thing, is that there might be more, um, focus coming into Scarborough in terms of, you know, we are making an effort to want to provide that kind of affordable housing, and we have other opportunities. There's an opportunity here for the town, not yourself, to get on board with, we, we don't only want to support affordable housing, we want to support workforce housing, and bring it, give it more publicity. Um, I live here, and I didn't know. So, thank you.
I'd like to also echo what Susan just said, Carrie. It puts a different perspective in my mind and a clearer picture of the situation, and I, I think it is a good door opener to our next application. Thank you.
Joe, just from a curiosity standpoint, what, what is the timing here? What, what, what's, what is, what if anything is a sense of urgency? Where, I guess what I'm trying to go to here is, um, I know that staff would like to have an opportunity to review your comments more-
Mm-hmm.
-before we approve. Certainly, the board has not seen any of those as of yet. Um, if, if we delay action on this for three weeks, what are we doing to the applicant?
Would you like to answer that one, Carrie?
Yeah.
I can't even believe I asked you that question, Carrie, but-
Well, to be honest with you, it's a major problem, major problem. We've got a lot of work we've got to get completed. We've got a limited window to get it done. We're talking about weather events, we're talking about paving events, when they open, when they close. This is a big, this is a lot of work. And, uh, I, you know, I, I don't know about the staff comments part, I know that there was a little bit of a confusion that we had with, and I'm not throwing you under the bus, Jay, but I saw in one of the, uh, responses, or to the comments there, that you weren't going to be back until late Tuesday, which kind of threw me off, because I didn't realize that the planning board meeting was Tuesday. I thought it was Monday, and I thought, well, how's that going to work? But Joe and I, once we went through that, we understood that. But, um, but, but to be, to be right up front with you, I need an approval tonight. I got to get started on this project. Um, we've got, uh, two massive ponds out there to build, one of them's sixteen thousand yards of materials coming out of. We've got to put a box culvert in that's, uh, where there's a crossing right now where it's failed, which is what's washing out the road. Um, you know, that's before we can even start working on the project. Um, so I, as far as staff comments go, I mean, I would, I, and again, with all due respect to the board, but I would think that, that, uh, that staff, um, it would, staff, if, if they're comfortable with, with our responses, then, um, then we should be afforded a, an approval. And that's not to say that, I don't think that anybody who's sitting up here giving their time, uh, volunteering their time, is, their, their input's not important, but I don't think that there's anything in the comments and in the responses that aren't kind of what, where, where we've already been, what this project's about, what, where, what we've talked about in the past. Um, you know, the only thing of it is, to be honest with you, that I see is, is, is really the, the typology. You know, the phasing, we're just changing the phasing. The six lots that we added, well, we, the only reason we withdrew those before is because we didn't want to rip a brand-new road up to put in the public sewer, and we had a private sewer across the street. But the sanitary district's not going to budge on that, so we'll go rip the road up and put a sewer in so we can make it public instead of private, when the private's no from, no further from me than, than the cameraman away. Um, the typologies, to me, is really the thing. And, um, you know, this is what a carriage house looks like. Um, we're trying to, you know, if you had something like this in the peninsula in Portland, you'd have, uh, you'd have a line of people ready to buy it the first day it went on the market.
True.
We're trying to put them down into Eastern Village. It's another way of trying to bring the cost of housing down. But when you really look at what our request is before you, I don't think that there's anything that's new here. Everything is, everything is kind of the same, we've been over it. Uh, we've been over it back when we got our approval. Most of it has come up, and we've had our amendments. Um, I've addressed the affordable housing as, as honestly and as best I can, but, um, and I really do, I need an approval.
I don't have any problem with that.
Thank you, Susan.
I just think that we, we went around the board, nobody really, we all essentially said that the three things that were being requested, we didn't really have any problems with, but we all wanted to know more about affordable housing. But it's a, it's a, it's a call from the chair, that's why we elected-
That's why I get all the money, right?
That's why you get the big bucks.
Um, other comments, gentlemen? I mean, I know, John, you were concerned about a couple of items, not just affordable housing. Um, you know, I don't want to-
I don't think that necessarily stopped me on the project, it's just an opinion that I felt could be done in this phase and not wait till five, but-
Yep.
It's not a deal breaker.
Okay.
I'm okay.
On this end, anybody else? Dick, Steve?
Project's been under construction for quite a while, it's been here for a long time, developer's been here for a long time, he's done a lot of work here, so he's not going anywhere.
Mr. Chair, just a question I have, and, and I know the applicant's conferring with his engineer, so I don't want to, um, one of the, I think it sounds like ostensibly the board and staff is generally fine with the proposal, but there are some changes to the lot layouts, um, that were formerly single-family lots, where the road alignment has changed. Um, minor changes, but changes, and we haven't seen those detailed plans. So I guess the only question staff would really, um, is struggling with is, staff's generally comfortable with the board doing a condition of approval, but we're, I'm not quite convinced that you're in a position to sign the plan tonight where we haven't yet reviewed the details of the road alignment changes, or, and, and so those are some of the questions that we have, and, and, um, with, with, um, understanding Mr. Carrie's concern, there are huge infrastructure, uh, components with Phase Three, um, I, I guess I would ask, where Phase Three has been approved, the stormwater pond, for example, the big stormwater pond, that's not really changing. The box culvert isn't changing with this. The road, the, the road alignment through Phase Three, for the most part, isn't changing. It seems like a significant amount of the work could probably still begin under the guise of the existing approval while we work out the details of the proposal. Am I, is that a fair assessment? And, um, because, you know, I, understanding the board's interest in working with the applicant and staff, it certainly, um, wants to work with the applicant as well, to move something forward that we all believe will wind up in, in, you know, we're headed towards an approval, but there are certain Ts to be crossed and I've dotted that we, in staff's assessment, we haven't quite seen yet. So I guess that's the question I would have, is it, given, given that there are the box, box culvert being one of the significant items you just referenced, it seems to me that that work could begin regardless, um, and, and maybe I'm missing something in that
Um, well, actually, that work can't begin until July fifteenth due to some upstream alteration, uh, issues that the state has, but there's other work that we need to get going on, that's just another part of it. Um, I believe, and you're right, we do have an approval for Phase Three, so our request for these changes is, well, we believe, to make it a better plan. Um, I do believe the town engineer has had those plans for, um, they were given to him, I know, sometime last week, but if you haven't seen them, I'm not sure. Joe can probably speak to that more.
Um, those are the Phase Three plans, correct? They're, they're not, they don't sort of get into the changes in Phase, I think it's Four or Five, again, sort of that area where the, where you're building the, uh, instead of what were, I think, three single-family lots, you now have four limited single-family with sort of the green space.
Yep, yep.
And I don't know that, the, you know, one of the questions that was sort of raised was, during the original approval, the access was understood to be coming off the alleyways. Well, now it seems that there's a couple of, uh, limited single-family lots where the- Well, now it seems that there's a couple of limited single-family lots where the access can only come off the main road.
Yep.
And, and those are the type of details that I don't think staff's had time to appreciate, and certainly I don't think the board, um, yet appreciates those type of changes. And so I think, again, I don't think that there's a problem in getting to an approval, but just making sure that we, it is a very complex and nuanced project. And, um, staff's facing to sort of rush through where, I think to your concern, it seems like a lot of the work that you wanna get underway could probably get under the, underway with the existing approval. And, and that would afford everyone the time to really work substantially through these very nuanced, um, uh, amendments. Again, I understand that, you know, it's minor road alignment. I, I, you know, I sort of looked at that, but it's typically, those are the details we look at prior to the board granting approval and signing a plan. So, um, if the board's comfortable, staff stands prepared to support the board in whatever direction they wish to go. Um, but I just feel it's important that I lay out sort of all, you know, staff's, um, understanding of what, of where we're at.
I understand. Um, I think, uh, I, and with respect to that area there that you're talking about with, as far as Phase Four goes, um, yeah, I mean, that's certainly down the road. I think that what's, what's important for us is obviously an approval to the new phasing, which presumably is not an issue. Uh, Joe, is there, uh, anything else that you can think of that addresses their concern? Uh, because I don't, you know, I mean, I agree with you. If, uh, that's a, that's a phase that's down the road, we can get you that information to, to make sure that everybody is all set with that, um-
Yeah, actually, what Carrie and I were talking about is the same direction you were going in, uh, today was, that, you know, he certainly, I, I, I agree. I think a lot of the stuff that is in the orig, what's in Phase Three today is the same Phase Three, Four. What's different is a lot, configuration from that, like 103, 105, and the six added lots that are unbalanced in a way, which Carrie would probably, that's not the first place to start in. So I think there definitely is time for that.
And, 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 you know, and I haven't, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it helps if I can just give you an explanation as to why we made those changes. It enhances the plan a little bit. Um, if I'll just take a second here. The, this, this area right here, uh, where we made these changes, uh, to what used to be four lots, we've now added a carriage lot. We've got another carriage lot here, and then we created this park space that all of these homes front up against, which, again, is kind of building, building on what we, what we're trying to do. This area down here in Phase Four, what we've done here is we've created like this lineage park that goes through three blocks and houses that confront out on it. Again, I think it, I think everybody probably support, again, the concept of what we're trying to do. But with respect to how we're going to access those and whatnot, yes, I get it. I understand what you're saying. Um, it would be good if we had these right here. They would be accessed, uh, the back two would be accessed from lot 106, 105A, 104B, 104, and 103A would be accessed from the alley. Obviously, these other three would be accessed off a classical way. Um, but, yeah, are we gonna be up there working in that area there in three weeks? Uh, probably not.
Carrie, can I, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I think what, cause the other thing I don't want you to have to do either, and I, I don't like applicants to have to do this just for the sake of doing it. I don't wanna have to come back and have a, a full show at the next planning board meeting just because we're doing some cleanup things. I mean, if the board is okay with this, I would propose that you work with town staff over the next couple of weeks, clean the areas up that they have concerns on, and that we treat this as a consent item at the next meeting. Don't have to come back full force, don't have to bring your engineers. You don't even have to be here if you don't need to. As long as staff is content with the cleanup, we'll just handle it as a consent item. Cause I think everybody's okay with what we're seeing. We just wanna make sure that we clean it up a little bit before we actually sign the MyLAR.
Okay, I understand. I just have one question. Does that, uh, have any issue with, with respect to the LOC? We're prepared to post a letter of credit, you know.
Yeah.
We, we were hoping to get a signed MyLAR, record, record the plan tomorrow, but I guess we can go based on what we've got for, for a, an approved Phase Three now, uh, move forward under that item. Get it, get it as a consent, address Jay's concerns, and, and if everybody's happy there, then I think that works for us.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're not miles apart here. We're, we're talking inches, and it's just, it's cleanup. And, and so if we, if we're signing a MyLAR, it'd be good if we got it right.
And, and let me just say, I didn't, I didn't fully, uh, appreciate where, where you were coming from, Jay, with respect to that. When we, when you were talking about the responses, I didn't, I wasn't understanding that you were getting more into cross-sections and profiles. Um, I thought we were talking about kind of a lot of the items that we'd already addressed. So, uh, you know, my apologies there.
And, and also, again, just a comment for me. I mean, I do fully appreciate everything that you have gone through on the affordable housing, and, and clearly, I do not want you to think in any way, shape, or fashion that, that I, or I think any member of this board does not believe you're not doing the right things, okay? It's, it's, again, it's, it's one of those, this is a, an ongoing item that we see from developers here in town trying to make this happen. And I appreciate the pain and do not show, or I'm not trying to indicate in any way, shape, or fashion fault on anything that you've done to try to make it happen. So, I appreciate what you're trying to do. All right? Superb.
I'm good.
All set? All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What, what I would like to do, and thank you, um, what I'd like to do is to, uh, take a five-minute recess and, uh, start back here at nine twenty-two.
What's the score, buddy?
Eight to two.
Red side?
They're saving themselves.
Yes. That's awful. The middle of six.
A little bit of what I was trying to say to him. I'm going to use the wrong idea. I have nothing to say. High demand developing. My point is that ours requires more effort on their part and on our part, and we can't just, I don't think the process is charged now. I don't think that's a bad word. But I don't, it's just the nature, the nature of the game.
I, what I like, you, you did a better job than everybody in getting me. See, would you rephrase, how the water was gonna go? Um, and, and so it made it clear to me. What I'm still confused about on that project is the water, the water is still on home's way, even with the culvert set up in Austin. But you, you, you corrected me. That's not their problem. Are they gonna make it worse? That's, that's the question. That, that was the question. Are they gonna make it worse? I tell you what, I, I, I don't know if you saw the paper today. Yeah, the, the two states did very well with education as far as having the schools and all. They had ten schools that-
Ten?
They, they were, that's my boy. Why you so far behind? Y'all, they take the lizard. They were, they were two, three, and four, they were ten. I, I know, because I, I keep telling you. And, you know, it makes me look like a boss's ass, so. I know what it is, but, but the amount of money we put into it. I agree with you. No, I agree with you. See, and I'm wrong. See, I, I get to the chase sometimes, and that's, that's my problem.
Because we have a lot of non-residential, we have a lot of, we have a lot-
How you doing?
But we're, we're more expensive than, than the towns that we, we have. We're more expensive than Kansas.
You warmed up at all? That's good. All right.
Back rate and standards was higher than Scarborough.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you. I appreciate that. That's because we, I'm evaluating it, so they get money from the state. See, that works.
I had that stashed in my bag. What can you make of this?
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody back to the, uh, planning board meeting for April twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen. Our next item on the agenda this evening is Habitat for Humanity. Request a sketch plan review for a thirteen-lot residential subdivision at Seventy-Five Broad Turn Road in the VR2 Zone. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so the property that's proposed to be developed is currently a town-owned parcel, which was purchased in two thousand and six for the express use of creating affordable housing as well as for land conservation, open space. Um, for the past number of years, Habitat and the town have been exploring the creation of low and moderate income housing, um, and subsequently, the council entered into an agreement with Habitat to enable them to move forward with the housing development, um, with the housing development on a portion of the property. To that end, it's this board's charge to review this application through the regulatory role that you have through the subdivision review ordinance and the provisions of the, um, VR2. Um, the VR2, uh, the purpose of the VR2 is to allow for moderate-density residential development. The zone, zone district has five village development standards, which are to be met for all residential subdivisions, and those are expressively spelled out right in the VR2 ordinance, uh, district. Uh, in reviewing the standards, staff provided a couple of comments to the board and applicant to think about in reviewing the sketch plan. Again, this is a sketch plan, so this is an opportunity for the board to sort of take a high-level review of what's being proposed and, uh, just voice any concerns you may have that you want the applicant to address as they put together their formal application. Um, to that end, a couple of the items that staff laid out you might wanna consider is the, uh, street design with regards to the width of the street, sidewalks, street trees, um, and how those are gonna, uh, function. One question staff had that we didn't see represented in the narrative or on the plan was sort of what is the, um, uh, potential for a trail connection or, or readily, readily available public access to the remaining open space backland? You know, is there opportunity for one or two parking spaces, you know, informal as they may be? Something that, uh, makes the area accessible to the general public? Um, let's see, um, I guess the only other item that we'd add with regards to sort of a detail comment, uh, the plan that was submitted shows some landscape buffering on the abutting MTA property, um, turnpike authority property, and of course, um, they would need authority and approval by the MTA to do that. Um, I just raised that now, just so it's not a surprise later, but I don't think it's a big area of concern moving forward. But, um, that is a summation of staff comments to date.
Great, thank you, Jay. Good evening, and welcome back.
Thank you. Chairman, members of the board, Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil. Uh, here this evening representing Habitat for Humanity, and, uh, the pleasure to be joined this evening by Mark Primo from Habitat, and, uh, he will be available to answer any specific questions about Habitat and about the virtual algorithm that Carrie had alluded to last time about how the prices are set. Um, before I go any further though, I'd mention that Dave, in answer to your question to Carrie previously, in this particular case regarding affordable housing, the cap is at one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So that gives you an idea, gives the town the idea of what we're actually looking at as far as what determines affordability. And that's a cap. That doesn't mean that they're going to be that way. It could be actually a little bit less. Um, the, uh, the previous project was a great segue into this one. Uh, every once in a while, we, well, we have a lot of great projects, to be sure, but every once in a while, we have the privilege to be associated with one that is just really cool all the way around. And this appears to be one of these. It's a great project, it's a great organization. Uh, the Habitat for Humanity, perhaps because of its name, has a significant pool of waiting applicants that would like to be able to get into affordable housing. Um, it's a wonderful project as far as affordable housing in a residential community into which an awful lot of people would like to move and, and can't really, in some cases, because of the affordable issue. Uh, that comes down to that old analogy of, you know, the fire, fireman can get to the fire faster if he actually lived in the community in which he worked, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, Scarborough is a wonderful community as far as, uh, residential housing is concerned, but obviously, it's a little bit limited, uh, through no fault of the town, as far as its affordability, and we aim to be able to change that a bit. Uh, and finally, one of the other things that makes this particular site absolutely wonderful for us is that it's going to be on town water and sewer, and, uh, we have a CDBT grant, a, uh, Community Development Block grant that has been granted that is going to be, uh, offsetting a good portion of the cost of bringing in public sewer, twelve hundred linear feet through an awful lot of ledge that would otherwise make it perhaps, uh, cost prohibitive for a lot of developers to try to do this. In conjunction with this type of project where it is, it just makes it even more affordable as far as getting the, uh, public utilities out to that particular area. Um, one of the, uh, the things that I would like to do this evening is reiterate what Jay has already said in that we're not asking for any approvals this evening, but we would like to solicit as much of your, many of your comments and as much of your feedback as we can that will allow us to go forward relatively quickly here to be back before you when we will start asking for, uh, specific approvals. So as soon as I'm finished with a brief presentation, if you would, please feel free to be very candid and let us know, uh, what you think is, is great about it, what you think may be, uh, either problematic or, or any issues that you might see that you would like to be able to have addressed. Uh, Jay brought up a couple of things that I would like to address specifically regarding the project, and that is the, uh, reduction of street width. We have right now, well, I tell you what, before we start there, let me just give you a quick orientation as to what's going on. Um, this is off of Broad Turn Road. This is the turnpike. Uh, Broad Turn Road, as it, uh, comes down toward the turnpike, hits a lower area right in here and starts coming up over the bridge. This is town-owned property in this section. Uh, as Jay mentioned, it was acquired in two thousand and six, and we're proposing to be able to put these number of lots in in this configuration, very similar to this, as you see it. Uh, this is a residential subdivision. It's all, well, most of Scarborough is residential, particularly in this particular area, and we're just looking to augment that, uh, providing thirteen new units for people who would love to be able to live here and otherwise haven't been able to find, find- and otherwise haven't been able to find a, either a house or a series of houses from which they can choose that would actually meet their criteria to think this is gonna change that. As far as the street width is concerned, Jay had mentioned that because of the VR two zone, we would be eligible for streets that are not quite as wide as they would be in the public domain. Typically, that's twenty-two to twenty-four feet wide. In this case, the regulation does allow us to go down to twenty feet of paved width. Now, keep in mind that this is not the narrowing the entire street including its subgrade. The fire department still has to weigh in and say we've gotta get our, be able to get two fire trucks back and forth in any situation. So we're looking at subgrade materials with shoulders basically that will still act as any public street would, but the width of the actual traveled way, the asphalt as it were, will be a bit narrower. Gives it a little bit more of a rural character, keeps it a little bit more homey, given that this is not really a cul-de-sac, but it's a looped road, it's only got one access point. It keeps it a little bit more rural toward that end. And we just think that's a better effort to be able to have streets that look a little bit narrower or are a little bit narrower than they might otherwise be in the public domain. As far as sidewalks are concerned, we do recognize that sidewalks are necessary here and we do propose them. As you'll see here, we've actually got a sidewalk coming in from Broad Turn right over in this section and it meets up in this area and then works to the middle which is typically where everybody tends to congregate in any given house or any given development to kind of work toward the middle toward that end. So we are certainly proposing the sidewalks that will go in there as well. There was also a comment about some trees. We've got an awful lot of trees that are in that area. Obviously, we're gonna be clearing out some of them for the road and some of the lots, some of those lots are fielded right now. In any areas where we do have a dearth of trees when we're created, when the lots are done, we'd be happy to actually put a couple of street trees toward that end. But fortunately, in this particular area, it's rather heavily naturally landscaped and we want to leave that to the greatest extent feasible. Toward that end, as far as landscaping is concerned, I'm gonna skip to the bottom of this list that Jay had provided and he was talking about the landscape buffering that we show on this landscaping plan. There's a couple of proposed trees and other bushes that are actually off the property. We're not proposing that anymore. That was more for this is where we're planning to be able to do some type of planting. We do not need to go off of our property as far as that's concerned. So when we do come back here officially asking for approvals, you won't see anything that's off the property toward that end. Also toward that end, instead of planting a huge number of trees on top of a very large berm because we are next to the turnpike, we're actually proposing a stockade style fence that will do sort of multiple purposes. One is from safety and even more than that is really to tone down the level, the volume of the noise of the turnpike regarding this particular area. So that has a double view as well. Trail connection that Jay brought up, there are actually two areas that we would propose for sensible public access, certainly for the people who are gonna be living there and because this is going to be a proposed for a public street, anybody, member of the public can come in here and use it as well. Typically, what that would be is an access over in this particular area and this section right through here. This upper one that you see here has got a small, I wouldn't say it's a ravine, but it's a significant drainage swell so it's not really conducive to a pathway although anybody can certainly walk through that. It's not a ravine. It's just a relatively shallow swell with steep sides to it. This area is absolutely conducive to be able to allow access into the back acreage. When you're looking at this, and obviously we don't show the overall acreage, it goes considerably further off of the plan, but we're only developing about quarters or third of the overall property. The rest of it is going to be left as open space. We have no objection whatsoever. As Jay had mentioned, if we'd like to put a couple of parking spaces, we can actually put a couple right in this area. We don't have a problem doing that. That would allow members of the public, you and me, to be able to pop over there and take advantage of a walk through the woods if we wish. So we're happy to be able to do that. The staff had mentioned that it encourages future submission materials that would have a written narrative describing how the proposal relates to the standards. And I'd like to go over the standards very, very quickly just so that you understand very quickly what they are and then obviously we'll go through it in more detail later on. Those five standards are essentially create a grid, are lots that are basically created in a grid style pattern, meaning nothing too funky looking. These lots are relatively basic as we go around the, we'll call it cul-de-sac or the looped road. The street width, which we already discussed, we would be very interested in keeping that at twenty feet as far as the traveled way. Sidewalks and the trees, we discussed that. There's an alleyway concept that doesn't really refer to this or pertain to this particular project at all so we're not even, we don't need to go there. And then last but not least is the open space and we meet all of this criteria. So toward that end, it's an excellent project given that. And we will end up removing those trees that are proposed that are off the site and that we shouldn't have any further problems toward that end. So, given that, what we'd love to be able to do is present you with considerably greater information of a more engineering detailed specific when we're back next time. But at this point, I'd love to be able to solicit any comments from the board as to what you might like to see, anything that is particularly concerned of yours and we'll go from there.
Excellent, thank you. John?
I'll make some comments. I was on the Scarborough Housing Alliance. Do you want to explain how many meetings, neighborhood meetings you've had as this thing progressed forward?
We've had several. I don't actually know the number of those, but Mark, if you've got... Four.
And you basically addressed a lot of the concerns of the neighborhood. This is, this originally was about twice the size, am I right?
Yes. That's correct.
So you listened to the neighborhood and shrunk it down in size. I like to look for this one much better than the other one. Go ahead.
Please state your name and address for the reference.
Mark Primo with Habitat Development Associate with Habitat. We had originally looked at this as seventeen, twenty-four units before that and, you know, the more we got into it, we really believed that single family homes are the way to go. We believe that the dream of homeownership is more powerful if it's a single family home as opposed to a duplex. So we did hear that in the neighborhood meetings and we also believe it's a better product for our families.
You know, the comment I had, the only person was at your last meeting, Mr. Bowser, Neil Bowser, who lives right there, that first lot. He's got a concern he can deal with later with the school department. Basically, the buses stopping on that hill, even though we decreased the speed, just a matter of asking the school department obviously to pick up the kids outbound and to drop them off. They'll pick them up in the morning and at nighttime drop them off the same way outbound so that the kids aren't crossing the street. And that's the only concern Mr. Bowser really had. He put a lot of stuff forward, but he was, that's the one he brought the most to me. And he listens, so he knows what the traffic's like. That's all I've got.
Right, thank you. Ron?
Yeah, you must have listened closely because you've addressed a lot of the things. You must have anticipated some of my questions. But the schematics that I have of the houses, are you gonna vary the styles or are they all gonna be the same?
No, there are several different concepts. It gets a little tedious if they're all exactly the same so we have to try to break those up a little bit more. As far as the affordability is concerned, they're all, from a material standpoint, they're all generally the same as far as the quality of workmanship and the cost, but there is a little bit of variance. It just kind of breaks things up a bit.
Okay, and one thing, and you anticipated, I was gonna ask how you're gonna block some of the noise from the turnpike to the project and you answered that with the stockade fence and I was glad to hear that because for the convenience of the occupants, you know, as much as you can do that, that would be great. What else did I have? Oh, wetland. Is there any wetland on the property?
There are no wetlands that are on our area of the property. There are wetlands on the property. As Susan mentioned earlier, you can't really get to many places in Scarborough anymore where you're not gonna encounter some wetlands. The biggest wet area of wetland we have is this cross section. We don't need to go near there relatively speaking. The access, it's not a huge stream. I mean, it's, you know, you can kind of jump over it. That's fairly easy. But no, there are no specific wetlands that we have to worry about in our section.
You seem to have answered everything else, so I've made notes. I'm all done.
Great, thank you. Sue?
Yay. This is very exciting. Really is very exciting. And I like what you're doing. I love the fact that we're going to get a choice of essentially same size housing, but different ways of doing it. Yep, great. One of the most important things that's happened so far, other than the fact that this actually came together, the town and Habitat working together, is you went to the neighborhood meetings. I mean, you created neighborhood meetings. I just, that's one of the things that in the last four or five years I've just become an advocate for right up front. Find out where you're gonna be, whatever you're doing, and interact with the people around you because, you know, you're bringing in people that are gonna be your neighbors and you want the neighborhood to know what's happening. So that was totally brilliant and congratulations to you. Yes to the parking spaces, to access to that. And I have no idea what's out there right now. I mean, is it just any trails, anything? Not really.
Hmm, no, it's forested.
Okay. People like the Land Trust know a lot about creating trails and I bet that considering that it's Habitat, if you get in touch with some of these people about bringing out scouts and other outdoor activities, the kids get to do it, they get adult supervision. There's all kinds of programs around the greater Portland area to do that. So I can see that once it gets built and people start moving in, that's a thing that the neighborhood could perhaps do with, you know, build trails.
Absolutely.
Little places, little benches and things. I'm getting carried away, but I think it's very exciting. The only thing I would really like to see, which I suppose is not possible, but I'm gonna put it out there anyway, is that this just cries for a couple of benches and a couple of trees and a picnic table right smack dab in the middle. I bet you can't do it because you haven't got enough land. But look at the way it's laid out. You got a center. Wouldn't it be wonderful?
I'm gonna make your day.
A lot.
One of these lots right here is not actually a lot.
It isn't?
It's not a housing lot.
It says Lot thirteen on it.
It's, well, it's a lot because we created that way.
Ah.
It's not a build up a lot, thank you. It is not proposed for any construction. It's going to be a common...
It's a bit like a village green.
Exactly.
Oh, you did make my day. You made my day, okay. Careful clearing up wherever there are trees, obviously. We all know to do that. Stockade fence, which is the stockade fence. Is that the one that always falls over?
We all have the idea of the solid fence. It's a defensive type of thing or in this case we're using it more of a, so there's for safety obviously, although we're not that close to the turnpike, but more for the noise abatement.
That's the only thing that concerns me is safety and noise. Not safety as much because a stockade fence would do that, but I don't know about noise and stockade fence because once you actually move in there, I mean, you know, I'm not saying that you need to do what they did on I ninety, on two ninety-five in South Portland. I mean, that's a major undertaking. But those houses are right up against two ninety-five, right? This is back more, but it's up, isn't it?
It's up slightly. It's not up as much as you might think. A lot of us when you drive out Broad Turn know, we start going up because we're going over the bridge.
Okay.
But the topography is relatively consistent.
Okay, so there's not gonna be a lot of the sound rising thing.
Well, actually there is. The sound typically rises, hits the fence and while you're gonna hear ambient noise no matter where you are, the predominant noise actually hits a buffer such as that and then tends to travel straight up.
Okay.
I would just like to comment on the noise. As part of this project, there's the Community Development Block Grant money which flows from HUD, so it triggers HUD review of this from a sound attenuation. And we were required by HUD to go through their worksheets to show the necessary sound attenuations and we were able to achieve that with the stockade fence.
Well, there you go. I don't have any other questions.
Great, thanks.
I'll just start by saying it's a nice project. This is great for Scarborough. I just had a question regarding the neighbors, the abutters, whether or not they had participated in some of those neighborhood meetings and whether they had any concerns regarding if there were to be parking spaces and a trail that leads to this back area, whether or not some of their property might be impacted or they were worried about people just kind of wandering around on their property. Was there, was there any discussion of that or any talk of maybe putting in a small, some sort of small, you know, post and rail type of fence system or something, just to kind of delineate a little bit?
There wasn't any specific conversation about that, as I understand it from all the meetings. There were a lot of, a lot of people could have showed up and didn't. There were very few that actually did. Those that did, did have some interesting comments. That was not amongst them from what I remember. There is sort of a, I don't know if you can see it from here, there is sort of a natural buffer between, in our housing area, between the houses that are in the development immediately adjacent to it, which is the tree line right through here. As far as connections are concerned to that, we're not proposing any connections, direct connections into that development. That development's already been there for many years. People will do what they want to do, especially if they're kids. They'll probably go anywhere and in some cases they're probably gonna be encouraged to play with the kids in the other neighborhood, et cetera. But we're not proposing to do a direct connection to that neighborhood primarily because there's no easements for us to take advantage of on those lots. Can you answer your question?
Yep, I'm mostly, yeah, I'm all set.
Great, thanks. Steve?
Thank you. Yeah, I like the concept. I like the variety of the modest homes. It's always nice to see variety in the subdivision instead of, you know, identical houses. However, I would change this layout. I would flip it so lots four, five, six, seven would be away from the highway. Know what I'm saying? Yeah, I would put them against the other boundary to get them away from the highway.
You mean over here?
Yeah.
That would be great. Unfortunately, the only access that we have is a very narrow strip for right here. If we were to come in this way, I'm not sure that we could actually, I don't know, I don't know how we could actually put lots over here.
You couldn't turn that road and kind of follow the existing, the old driveway and then go in?
You mean the driveway down here?
Yeah.
So that's not on our property.
Oh, it isn't?
No. What you see right here essentially, this is the property that we've got available. So it's a great idea, but...
Who owns that?
This is Department of Transportation. And this is actually their access, well, the access to the turnpike. They keep a boneyard here when they do a work over in this area.
And you couldn't, you couldn't go in and then angle the road to connect to the circle?
Well, anything is possible to be sure. I think it's more of a challenge this way because this is our only access right here. If we were to try to come in this direction, I think we would end up stymying the ability to be able to create the lots according to the grid concept, which is what the regulation is all about. If it were over here, that would be a no brainer. We'd be coming in straight in here and probably have some type of loop road or cul-de-sac. Lots on both sides. This is not the most cost effective type of doing a road because obviously, you know, you want to create a road initially and then have houses or have lots immediately adjacent to them. This costs a fair amount of money just to get here where the houses are there. So it's not ideal, but it's absolutely the most ideal given what we work with.
Okay, I, that makes sense. Where would the fence be? Is that that white dotted?
Fence is actually gonna be right over here and then come down this way, just like this.
What's the other line? That white dotted line along the highway? No, along the highway?
I believe that's the end.
Oh, that's the turnpike line. That's the difference between the Department of Transportation line and the turnpike.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, I guess I'm all set.
A lot of the things that I was looking at have already been talked about. I don't wanna go over more and more, but I just want to be assured, and I know that you already addressed it, but absolutely no wetlands on private property, correct?
We will have the wetlands delineation of the property specifically outlined for you and we know the regulation to the extent that if there are any whatsoever, then we're gonna show those right up front. We've already done the wetlands delineation. I just don't have that off the top of my head.
I just, Jim, you know me, I have a thing with wetlands on private property. So I just wanna ask the question, kind of a crazy one, but has there been any thought given to any kind of endangered species or fauna in this area?
You mean searching for it?
Yes.
You don't go normally looking for that kind of thing.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm just asking the question.
Right. This will require a stormwater permit, which means that the DEP does get a chance to be able to review it. And as you're probably aware, irrespective of the type of permit, once a project gets before a state agency, DEP, the DOT, IF&amp;W or whatever, it opens up the entire project for scrutiny. So toward that end, if there are any endangered species, the spotted salamander, et cetera, et cetera, that somebody may have recognized out there or thinks they might, we will be the second to know. The DEP will tell us.
Don't we do that instead of the DEP now?
Uh...
Only for site law projects, not stormwater permits.
But there's nothing that they're doing that we would do other than the DEP and not the DEP? What is it called, that thing that we just got?
Site law?
Site law.
Right.
We, we have.
So, we now have municipal capacity, but this application, the scope of this does not trigger site law. We still don't have municipal capacity for stormwater.
Okay.
Whether we'll get there or not is a whole different question, but we have site law.
Okay, thank you.
I love the concept. I like what you're doing. I'm, I'm hoping that you have overflow applicants and you direct them to carry.
Mr. Chair, I have a question before you.
Keep that in mind.
Yeah.
No, no issues with road length or anything in terms of second egress or we're good there?
Because it's a looped road.
Yeah.
Right. It's the only, the only access, or the only issue where that comes up is this section of the road right here. Because it's a looped road, this is all we have to worry about. We're nowhere close.
Right. Okay, I, I'm not trying to bring up.
Yeah, I wish you would.
Problems, I'm trying to eliminate them.
Sure, no, this is what we're here for. Don't waste time next time.
Are you thinking or planning on doing any kind of lighting or anything?
Yes, there will be, uh, uh, all the utilities will be subgrade, by the way.
Yep.
Um, and there will be street lighting. There will be a, a Cobra style light at the beginning, or at the entrance from Broadway, and then we will have the lighting throughout. Um, I can't tell you at the moment how many lights that will be. Uh, keeping in mind that this overall project is somewhat limited in cost, which doesn't mean that we're gonna ask for a lot of waivers for something that would otherwise be required. Um, but because, as Mark had mentioned, that there are some limitations in terms of the overall pool of money that's available to do the build out, we are limited in some respects. What that means is that instead of maybe eight lights or something, we may have three, or to that effect. And we will certainly show those when we come back with the engineered design.
Try to keep them as low as we can and, you know.
Absolutely.
Things of that nature. Um, doo 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 doo. You got a funky little triangle on the west corner. What, what's that all about?
That is for the, uh, fence, for the, uh, fencing that we wanna be able to have, uh, in part because of the, uh, the noise. So, instead of actually coming at a ninety degree.
Okay.
Actually kind of segueing that through.
Got it. So, is that considered open space then?
Um, yeah.
Or quasi?
It's part of open space, but it is going to be more quasi because nobody's really gonna be able to get to it.
Yeah, okay. Do, do you know what currently exists between Lot nine and Lot ten, Jim?
It's gray.
Easternmost part, yeah.
It's gray.
Uh, it's in condition right now, I think it's just kind of.
Okay. I, the coloring just seemed, maybe it's just the way that the, um, you know, the, the, the plan was drawn, but it just looked like it was an overlay. So, I didn't know if that was, uh, some kind of waterway or?
No, it's a scrub shot. The only type of waterway that we really have there naturally now is a pre, um, condition or a preconstruction condition, is this little swale that comes right down through here, which kind of gathers the water and just channels this way. We're still gonna be taking advantage of that. We're not changing that dynamic at all.
Okay. And it's gonna be like a public road, public, you, uh, public, uh?
Yes, uh, the.
Trash collection, all of that other good stuff, right?
Once it's all completed and built out fully.
Okay. I think that's, you know, based on what we're looking at so far, that's, that's probably, um, the most of my, the most of my questions. I see that you actually did put the crosswalk on the plan.
It's good.
Now, the question is, is what's it gonna be made of, but I'll let that one go.
Let's wait.
All right, all right, I'll let that go.
The road will be paved too, by the way.
All right. No, it's good. I, I, I think it's great. Bring it on. Show us more.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question.
Oh, sorry.
Um, Jim, there's an access road that maybe the main turnpike is so.
Yes.
Do they use it often?
Um, it's not utilized as much now as it was when the, uh, the bridge was being redone. Uh, but every once in a while at bridge accesses, you'll see, if you drive up and down the turnpike, you'll see that as an emergency access for state vehicles only ostensibly, um, it allows emergency access. But that's gated, right down, you can't get on, on or off the turnpike without, uh.
I, I understood you can't go onto the turnpike. I was just wondering about the, you know, buses going in or children coming in and out. And I'm looking ahead at whether or not that was an issue as far as the main turnpikes are, are using that for traffic.
No, there will be a small easement right down in this section that will allow them to be able to keep their road there.
But it won't interfere with any, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
You know, in terms of the bus issue, and I haven't really gone, I haven't driven by the property, so I'm not sure of the hill situation, but, you know, maybe, maybe, if there, you might wanna consider a little turnoff area, I'll call it, with a place for the children to get out of the weather kind of thing, right there toward the end of that road, if that's.
Uh, it's something we can certainly consider, and this is actually a question for Jay, and I'm not sure that you know this or not. Is, once this becomes a publicly accepted road, is there any provision in Scarborough that prevents a bus from actually going into this development?
That's really at the school, it's the school board or the school body's decision as to what their bus route looks like. So, it's if it's a public road, you know.
What I've generally seen is it's age driven.
Sure.
The younger the child, the more likely that they'll go into the development. By the time you reach middle school, generally they're looking for them to walk to the main roads.
Sure. Um, I can't comment on it specifically, but I would think as a matter of personal and somewhat professional opinion, having worked with projects somewhat similar to these over the years, given the caliber of the housing, uh, as affordable housing and workforce housing, it's more than likely that there will be younger children, younger families in a situation like this. Now, I understand from having children of our own that, uh, bus routes change annually. There's probably going to be enough with the thirteen lots in here that might make it conducive for the school board to, uh, to agree. I don't know what all their criteria is, but to actually have the bus go through the neighborhood, that's what we were looking at doing.
Yep.
Um, if it ends up changing, you know, it's conceivable certainly that we could have a bus turnout there. It's even possible that, uh, and now I'm just reaching, um, is that, uh, this area is actually fairly wide. You can see there's sort of a, well, you can't see it on your drawings probably, but on this one, there's already basically a little turnout right here.
Yeah.
Um, we were involved in the, uh, um, engineering and surveying for the bridge that was going over the turnpike years ago when the turnpike was being widened. And this area is actually flatter than wider than you would expect. Uh, and it's continually maintained by the, uh, main turnpike, even though this is DOT property, this road is maintained by, uh, the turnpike authority. The point being is that it's hardly ever used, and, uh, it would be conducive to being able to have a little turnout right in here if that's something that, uh, the buses need to.
Yeah, it, it may be curious just to do a little bit of a line of sight up the hill.
Oh, we've got that.
So.
Okay, we've got a traffic report that you don't have with you now because it's only a sketch plan, but we do have that already completed.
Okay, good. Anything else you need from us?
Uh, if that's the extent of the comments, I appreciate that and that's what we came for.
We like it.
Thank you very much.
Can't wait to see more, thanks. Our next item this evening is Ringme Farm Subdivision, Rosbaras Brothers Construction requests a sketch plan review for a thirteen lot residential subdivision off Highland Avenue in the R two zone. Mr. Chase?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as, as you just noted, this application is in the R two zone, which is one of the lower density zones in, in town, and is one of the areas that does require a conservation subdivision if certain thresholds are met. And in this instance, that's one of the thresholds is being met in that the property has greater than one acre of wetlands on it. Therefore, um, a couple of things need to come into play in, in the design criteria. One is that fifty percent of the land needs to be maintained as open space. And the other, uh, component is that within the R two subdivisions need to be sewed. Um, and so, uh, we'll ask the applicants to provide a overview of what their considerations are in, in that approach. Um, one thing I'd also like to note is while the lot is predominantly R two, there are little sections or modest sections of industrial as well as RF, sort of an interesting confluence there. But, um, and so I just, I think it's important that as the applicant sort of moves forward with their net residential calculations and sort of laying out the lot area, that we sort of readily identify those lot areas. How much is in industrial, or take that out of the net res calculations and have residential and industrial. Just sort of work through the calculations based on the percentage of lot within each zone. So, we just have to think about that moving forward. Um, in terms of design, um, staff just questions, or the board applicant might wanna think about, you know, if there's merit to considering, um, connecting the proposed cul-de-sac and looping it, sort of like what we just saw frankly, with the, um, with the, what's being. Right now, there's a, I should step back, there's a existing private way, um, that accesses the back, oh, the back red, uh, rectangle we're looking at the house. There's a private way and they're proposing to maintain a portion of that as a private way for frontage for that lot. Uh, staff just questions if there's merit to consider looping. There may not be, given the extent of the proposal, but certainly it's something worthy of discussion anyway. Um, in looking at this, you know, the board applicant might wanna consider the, given the scale of development, um, street design, merits of street width, sidewalks. I know, uh, on a recent, uh, subdivision in, in this area, Settler's Green Two, there was provision for sidewalks connecting to Highland Avenue, and that may be considered to be incorporated into this development. Um, and then just the other, one other item, based on a, a pre-meeting discussion that staff had with the applicants, um, we understand that they're considering doing some, some grading and birmingham along Highland Avenue, sort of along the back of the lots that have frontage on Highland Avenue, but will actually gain their access off the proposed, uh, public, or proposed, proposed street. Um, and they, as I said, they're considering doing some, some grading and birmingham in that area, and so maybe applicant can just, uh, bring the board up to speed with what's being considered there. Because I know that's something they are pretty interested in moving forward with sooner than later, given that they have, um, the Rosbaras Brothers have quite a bit of, uh, stockpile that they're looking, that this is where they wanna put it and they wanna move it. So, uh, it may be worth starting that conversation now and seeing what could be done with that. Um, with that, uh, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm the Board, Jim Fisher, Northeast Civil. Uh, here this evening representing the, uh, Rosbara Brothers or Rosbara Brothers Construction. Um, it's, uh, it's great to be able to work with Rosbara in many respects. Uh, over the years, we've established quite a, a lengthy relationship. In one respect, I'll point out, I use this as an example, we could actually, based on the density of the, uh, the district in which this is located, get twenty-three lots in here. Rosbaras are developers. They have chosen to take the higher road, as it were, and said, "We don't need twenty-three lots. Let's cut this down and make this more attuned to the lots, generally speaking, that are in the overall character of the, um, of the neighborhood, uh, from around Pleasant Hill Road, both sides. And toward that end, we, uh, we nearly cut those in half and increased the size of the developer, the lots, even though, uh, those lots could actually be reduced by about two thirds of what you see there right now." So, toward that end, it's a big feather in their cap, saying, "We're not just into, uh, cutting and running. They live here, they work here, and this is a great company with which to do business." Toward that end, uh, let me give you a spin of orientation. What we see here, Pleasant Hill Road is essentially right here, uh, comes out to Route one down the way down here, and the fire station, Pleasant Hill Fire Station's right about over here. Coming down Highland Avenue, there is Banniger Way, which is the private road that is in existence right over here. What we're proposing to do, and this is pursuant to, uh, comments we had from, uh, staff earlier, uh, is make this the road and this is basically tantamount to a driveway. Uh, it's because it's only gonna be serving one house, which is this one that is not part of the subdivision, by the way. Uh, we keep it as a private way because as Jay mentioned, that's where the frontage came from and legal frontage. We can't make something more non-conforming. So, that will stay here, but it is essentially a driveway. That kind of gets to the, the looped concept. They had requested that we not do a specific loop, uh, with a significant amount of traffic, given what's there right now, relative to what's there right now that would be coming by their front yard. It's obviously up to the board, but that was a request by the individuals who, uh, owned the property. And, uh, and I don't see that there's any problem with that. We are far under the minimum that we have as far as the length of the road is concerned, and it works rather well. One of the things as far as the orientation is concerned too, that Jay brought up earlier, is that, um, whether it's DPW or Driven by Whomever, there is a request to be able to do, if we have a cul-de-sac, uh, sort of the number nine looking cul-de-sac, where instead of coming up to the bulb at the end, it would come up, uh, similar to what we just saw on the previous project, where it comes straight up and then kind of loops back on itself and it looks like a number nine. Uh, we don't have any problem with that. I'm not sure that it's really germane to anything that's, uh, requiring that over any other design, but, um, if that's a significant, uh, item that any member of the staff or, you know, uh, public services in Scarborough, then we can certainly accommodate that. That's not a big issue. Again, these lots are oversized relative to what they need to be, so we have some room to be able to play with that. As far as the zones are concerned, this is actually a concept based on a retracement survey that we had, surveys from around the area. We have subsequently surveyed out the entire property and we've got this down to the square foot. Uh, it's very close to what you see right here, meaning these outer parameter lot lines. But to answer Jay's question, we have the specifics now about the, the amount of square footage that's in these respective zones, and we will show that to you when we're back next time. We do not propose to take advantage of anything that is, the zones, by the way, are, uh, this is one of the zones down here, this is another portion of the zone up here, and then the industrial, and then the farm and for, the RF zone, and then the R two zone. So, we're proposing to keep everything in the residential zone and not go near the, uh, the others. So, we shouldn't have any problems toward that end. Uh, as far as the, uh, connection to sewer service, it will be a public water and sewer in that area. Uh, the Rosbaras will be bringing that, uh, connection down to the area, and we're proposing to have each individual lot have its own push station, which is very common. That will, uh, push into the force main, which will then go up to, uh, Highland Avenue and then down Highland Avenue for treatment. Uh, water the same way, there's already water in that area actually, so we'll be able to just run the water lines right in there and everybody will have, uh, public utilities and everything will be subgraded again. Uh, looping the dead end road, again, we propose not to actually loop that based on the, uh, suggestion of the people that own the property. Um, we can do the, uh, the number nine cul-de-sac, uh, design if we need to, it's certainly okay. Uh, designing the, uh, reduced width of the road, we would like to take advantage of that, as we had, as I mentioned previously on the other project. Uh, we would like to be able to go down to twenty feet of pavement as opposed to the normally accepted twenty-two feet that's allowed in this particular district. So, that will help. Again, that's not narrowing the overall road, it's just narrowing the surface coating, the traveled way. So, from a fire department perspective, there should be no issues as far as the subgrade materials are concerned. Uh, sidewalk and street trees, uh, street trees, we have no issue. It's a field right now, or the predominance of it, so we can certainly put some street trees in there. Sidewalk, just to be very honest, we're just not sure a sidewalk in this particular case is necessary. Uh, there's a finite number of lots, there will not be any more, or lots than the ones that you see here, it can't go any further. Um, toward that end, it's a very suburban type of atmosphere. Most of the people who are in there are gonna be the ones that are living there only. Uh, so, we're just not sure that, uh, that a sidewalk is really going to do anything. We do understand that there's a, the sidewalk from Settler's Green that comes out to Highland Avenue. Uh, that particular subdivision or series of subdivisions has, please don't quote me on this, but probably close to seventy or eighty homes in that. This has got thirteen. Um, we just don't think that that is something that is really going to be conducive to anything positive in this particular area. Uh, but we're open to suggestion. And then as far as, um, providing for the buffering along Highland Avenue, uh, as Jay mentioned, the Rosbaras are planning to do that anyway. There's already a small berm there that's right, right now. It's going to be augmented. Uh, we would not like to camouflage the entire development, but we would certainly like to be able to put enough landscaping across that berm, uh, to be able to break it up a little bit, so that anybody who is traveling Highland Avenue, which is a bit of a corridor, to be sure, it's not a major arterial, but, uh, there are a lot of, uh, uh, there's a lot of traffic there. And, uh, we do plan to be able to augment that berm with quite a number of plantings that will kind of break up the landscape a bit and, uh, help everyone as far as, uh, anything from noise and safety to, uh, camouflaging a bit of the, uh, development from the roadway. Given that, we're just looking again for, we'll be back soon, uh, with this one, with the fully engineered plans, and toward that end, any other comments that the board members might have or questions you've got, please, now's the time.
Okay, uh, Jim, help me. Lots A and B is part of the project?
Yes.
Okay. So, that private way, you, I guess, where does the new road start?
Uh, the new road's actually going to start right at this intersect, this sort of Y intersection right here.
So between point A and point B, where the new road starts, is a private way?
Well, this is all a private, oh, you mean, as we're proposing it to go forward?
Yes.
It's just this section that will remain the private way, right here.
That will remain, but going into the, the structure to start with, is, is, that's going to be private, right? Or is that going to start the road right there?
No, this will start the road.
That will start the road, okay. See, I didn't get that on, on here. Okay, and the, and then that other section will remain a private way. Lot seven, how are you going to get into the, into the structure? Where, where's going to be the entrance?
Right.
Yeah, from, from the cul-de-sac?
Oh, right off the edge of the cul-de-sac.
Okay, so right, right directly in?
Yes.
Okay. We talked about the sewer service and I remember, yeah, reduced road with, I think you've hit all I want for the time being, so I'll pass on to my fellow board members.
Susan?
Why is it A and B and not, um, twelve and thirteen?
Um, it's period to differentiate the lots that are already there, that have already been built up. Those are, are houses, well, actually.
There's only one with a house. And the one that is private is the fellow who sold the land.
Well, this is actually, these...
Yeah, I know it's, yeah, I got it.
Okay.
I got it. It just seems odd to me that we have eleven and we have A and B.
Thank you, Susan, I appreciate that, that's what confused me.
Yeah.
Sure, we can certainly change that.
Yeah.
Ostensibly, they were, these were labeled this way, because this house is currently for sale, and this one they want to recapitalize on soon.
Okay, so I'm confused, again, let's go to the right-hand side of this, is this lot, does this, this subdivision goes to the dotted line, red, or to the dotted line, blue?
Uh, the subdivision is, the parameters of the subdivision, or the perimeter, basically, of the land follows the dotted line, blue.
Okay, so what's going to happen to all of the green that is now RF and all of the industrial?
That is wetland.
It is wetland?
This area, right, this is all.
Of course it is, it's on Highland Avenue. So where this subdivision is going in is essentially going to take up what we now know as a field?
Yes.
Okay, which takes me to the note down here that says, "This is an arterial," excuse me, "this is most of the traffic," soapbox time, "most of the traffic that goes through Oak Hill, early in the morning and later in the afternoon, are people coming from the south to South Portland, and they go right down Highland Avenue, very, very, very busy." Of course you do, there's a lot of traffic. It could be, but, another nice thing about it is that in the fall, it's spectacular, it is a spectacular drive. And one of the nice things about that spectacular drive is you go by this lovely garden.
I understand.
If I can't go there, huh? Actually, where I'm going is, the berm is a great idea, hopefully, and, I mean, Rocky Rusberra said to me once, "Susan, I can do anything with dirt." And I know that's true. So I would like to see all of this wonderful stuffy sort of green be sort of, you know, undulating with trees.
Yes.
They don't have to be trees that are going to block the view, but different varieties of healthy, green, all-year-round trees, okay?
Yes, this is a project that called out for that.
That will be really great, because that will take the sadness out of losing the farmland. Oh, well, um, okay, the loop does not, it's not important to me, I don't know whether it is the staff, but it's not to me. Street trees is a great idea, again, anything to help, one of my biggest problems with all those developments up around Pleasant Hill, where there used to be great big farms when I was a child, are now all houses, and it's just houses, and even when the landscaping grows, it's still going to be houses with landscaping on a field. So the idea of putting in street trees right from the beginning, I think is very important. Um, I don't think that the sidewalk needed there either, doesn't seem important to me. But I think, other than that, I applaud the fact that the lots are going to be larger than is necessary, that's a wonderful thing to see. Um, open space up above, it's got, primarily, it's got some wetland on it, but they're just keeping it open space because it's hard to get to?
Hmm, no, we could have made it, incorporated it part of the lot, we just chose not to.
Oh, I love it, this is wonderful. So it's going to be open spaces part of the, there'll have to be some kind of a neighborhood, what is it called, um?
An association that will maintain it, yes.
Is that going to be open space, green, and that's going to be part of the, of the covenants as well? Not just, that's labeled open space, is this labeled open space down here? Yes, it is, yes, it is. The whole thing is going to be open space, this is very good, this is very good, okay. I think it's, um, I cry, but at the same time, as I say, there's hope. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Nick?
I am, I'm fine with the road design not looping around, you have this, okay in my book. Small neighborhood like this, I, I agree, probably does not need sidewalks. Street trees are great, road width is fine with me at twenty feet, long as the fire department is happy, and, uh, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Dave?
Uh, I appreciate the concern for, first of all, the private way not wanting a loop road, and I agree with that. Um, I think sidewalks is a good idea. No, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I agree with you that sidewalks are not necessary in this project. Um, I'm okay with the cul-de-sac, um, street trees would be nice, especially considering that this whole area is just an open field.
Right.
Is there a reason why lots, the, the boundary lines for lots four, five, and six were not extended to that red line? Is it, is it the wetlands?
Yes.
Okay.
Wetlands in the buffer there, bro.
What about access to the open space?
Um...
Besides walking down Highland Avenue?
Sure, um, we don't actually show that on the plan, but we can certainly make an access that would, for instance, be like between lot four and five or something like that. Um, it opens up the area, to be sure.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you.
I'm good, everybody's said everything I wanted to say.
You're good, all right. So much like you're thinking about some access space between four and five, how about doing the same thing between eight and seven? To the, to the space, the open space up above?
Sure.
Yeah? Okay. Um, I, I guess I'm a sidewalk kind of guy, I'd prefer to see one. Uh, berms are good. I, I'm a little confused in terms of how we're calculating the frontage, the road frontage for the, the existing house on the private way, and, and...
In this one right here? Or this one?
Yeah, that one. The, the way the, the way the lot is, I guess, I'm not exactly sure, how that, where that is a private way, I'm not sure how the road frontage comes into play as part of the subdivision. So I guess I'd kind of like you to huddle with Jay on that one and come up with how that's being calculated, because it just doesn't add up to me, so...
I'm not sure I understand you.
Well, when I think, go ahead.
The, the frontage is the existing boundaries, and I think, Mr. Fisher, for everyone, right there, those two points that Mr. Fisher's pointed to, there to there, that's their frontage, that's on, there, there's currently an approved private way plan out there, and that's how that lot has frontage. So they, those are current lot lines, and those aren't changing.
Okay.
And keep in mind that that lot is not part of the subdivision, that's a separate ownership completely, and the rest of this land, we don't have any control over that.
All right. Little confusing, but okay, everybody else is happy, so I'll, I'll let it go. Uh, you talked about the utilities, the twenty-foot pavement, I'm all set with, um, we spoke earlier this evening about markers to delineate the no disturb area for, toward the wetlands, I'm assuming you're going to do that again?
Yes.
So, let that go. Um, the only other thing is, and, and I'm sure that you probably did that, but if you haven't, make sure that your circumferences on the cul-de-sac, where we're going to a twenty-foot wide roadway, are still okay with the fire department.
Yes, um, the, the right-of-way will still be the fifty-foot ride requirement, so we're not, while we're narrowing, and I understand your question, we'll certainly put that, we have to anyway, to run it by the fire chief, but, uh, the actual radii, the curved radii, will be the same in any situation, just the pavement on which they're driving will be a little bit narrower.
Okay.
But again, they have these shoulders that if two fire trucks have to pass in the night, kind of thing, they can go off the pavement and still stay up on the road, as it were.
It just, the appearance seems, it's a visual, so I just wanted to make sure we got, we got that correct.
Yep.
Outside of that, again, lighting or anything like that are you thinking about, or no?
Um, we're looking at one light, again, that will be, uh, need to have, uh, right down here.
At, yeah, at the, at the roadway, yep.
We were not planning on any of the lighting in this area.
Okay.
There's actually, over this hill, um, even down into, uh, I don't know, how many yards, like, uh...
Miata.
There's the, where all the trailers are.
Yeah, Miata's in there.
That's pretty lighted down there, not necessarily conducive to, uh, what we would normally like.
All right.
So, pointing to this lot, we have been at least going over.
And, and no, no, in that northernmost open space, no trails or anything, no connectivity there that you're aware of?
Uh, connectivity to...
Anywhere else.
This section, talking from here.
Yes.
Now, this whole section, actually, interestingly enough, we don't control any of this land over here, but the eastern trail, is, with which we were just involved as well.
Right.
Is coming from Wainwright Seals, coming through around the pond, sort of golf pond anywhere, that trail is right about here, so, um, that will, will ostensibly connect down the, the central main car, right away.
Yep.
A portion of that, so that's not that far away, you can't access this property because it's not ours, but there will be a trail, of, of the trail over there, definitely encourage anybody, obviously, who's just watching this section or whatever, to follow that.
Jim, are you aware that there's going to be a major project between the town and the Department of Transportation on Pleasant Hill Road? As far as reconstruction is concerned, there's going to be the bikes for, and it starts this summer, around, uh, Rigby Road and Gibson Road, there's going to, that's a two-year major project that's going to begin, and also on the agenda is to do something with the corners where the fire station is, because that's become a real problem. So there's going to be a lot of construction going on in that area, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Steph's had a conversation with the Rusberras at our pre-application meetings, recognizing that there's sewer connections going to be at the Pleasant Hill intersection area, we let them know that that project was coming, and they, like, want to try to coordinate into that, if possible.
That's what I was going, yeah, that's what I was... Big bid's one next week, right? Big bid's next week, isn't it?
Good.
Twenty-nine.
That's all I have, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman?
Yes.
Can I just ask something? That road will become a public road?
Yes, that's the intent.
And the pavement will be twenty feet wide?
That is also the intent.
By, by a fifty-foot right-of-way?
Yes.
Um, so the idea is to still be able to get two fire trucks going, passing each other?
Yes, the overall width of the quote-unquote traveled way will be what it always is intended as a public right-of, as a public street. The pavement or the traveled way portion of that can be narrowed down as long as the shoulders, which you may not even, you meaning anybody, may not even see, because the provision allows for the subgrade materials to be able to build up to support an eighty-thousand-pound pump truck, but you can actually loam over the top of that, not that it will be, but we can, um, up to several, up to three inches, and that makes it look much more rural in character, from an aesthetic standpoint, it just looks a lot cooler, but the fire trucks know that if they have to then segue off the road, because they're passing or whatever, that they're not going to get mired in April in the mud and roll over, that they're going to have a solid base beneath them, so it looks a lot better, it's still plenty wide.
I, I appreciate that, but my question is probably to Jay, what, what happens when you have four-foot snowbanks on each side of that pavement?
I'll have a conversation with the Public Works Director in the fire department on the...
Would they, would they go in and plow later?
We'll talk about the road width, we haven't talked about that detail yet, so when there's a formal application, certainly the Public Works Director and Fire Department will weigh in on as to if they think that twenty-foot is adequate or not, and that's typically who we turn to and look for their guidance as to what they're comfortable with from an operation and maintenance standpoint.
Yeah, 'cause that, you know, snow might defeat the purpose of this whole thing.
Well, that's, that's a very good point, that snow can be plowed further back, keeping in mind that, um, if the loam, if they do choose to loam up to the actual edge of the pavement, we're looking at a, albeit slight, but a crowned road, so that as far as the blades are concerned, they can actually extend the blades to three feet beyond the edge of the pavement on both sides, without ripping up any of the soil, because again, it drops, I'm oversimplifying, but it drops off fairly significantly that way. So it does work, and then if any repair is necessary, you know, in the springtime, then just make it.
Okay.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions, or what you'd like to see?
I think we're good.
All right.
You got everything you need?
I do, thank you very much.
Nice.
Be sleeping bad next time.
Thanks for spending the evening with us, and the next time, beverages or something like that would be appropriate?
Cheese and crackers.
Was that to me?
Yes.
I'll see what I can do.
All right, thank you. Uh, Town Planner's Report.
Sure, I have a couple of items to bring to the board's attention. One, we have received an application for lot seven on Scarborough Gallery, which the board has seen as a sketch plan. We've received a pre-application submission, so we are beginning our staff review of that, so I would anticipate they'll either be on the board's next agenda or the subsequent agenda that they are likely coming forward pretty soon. Um, you've probably noticed a lot of work out there in their pre-loading that we talked about earlier in the winter. Um, two other items I just want to bring to the, well, one, one item I want to bring to the board's attention, you should have received, I believe, an email from me or Dan Bacon regarding a meeting on May eighth, all committees meeting at six o'clock at the, uh, let's see, Middle School Cafe, um, so if you folks are able to make it, that would be great. The other item I want to talk about is, our next meeting is May twelfth, um, the, that is a Monday, but the irregular thing about it is we will be meeting at the Middle School Cafe, because we're cafeteria, I'm sorry, we are being usurped by voting in this room, so we'll be down at the Middle School in the cafeteria. Uh, we had also talked about having a workshop on that, prior to that meeting, um, and again, I want to, I know Mr. Mazur, I believe, has indicated he will not be able to attend, he will be at the meeting.
But don't, but don't, if everybody else can make it, then by all means.
So I just wanted to get a general sense of the rest of the board, if May twelfth was still on your radar and still seemed doable for, you know, get together at five or five-thirty, what have you, with details will be added here shortly, but seeing that 's the best, so good, thank you.
I want my picture sometime after that, though.
We'll, we'll save you a piece for when you get back.
It's Mother's Day weekend, right?
Mm-huh. Yeah, bring 'em on down.
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember my schedule, so, if I have an issue, I'll get back to you.
Take, take a look at your calendars.
Yep.
Um, let, let us know soon as possible, we can certainly find another day. Um, that's what I have for my Town Planner's Report.
Thank you very much. Administrative Amendment Report.
Um, let's see, I'm trying to remember, the last one I recall is the outdoor display at the Chad Little, and I can't remember if we had referenced that, was that the last?
Mr. Bacon handled that for you?
Okay, all right.
We're good with that one.
Excellent, thank you.
Any correspondence? No. Planning Board Comments. Mr. Mazur?
I'd just like to follow up on what I said a couple of minutes ago, Transportation Committee, um...